Okay, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Today is Thursday, March 16th. This is our regular scheduled board meeting that was supposed to be on the 14th, but we have a snow day, so it was moved to this evening. I'd like to make a motion to move to executive session. First by Carrie.
Second.
Second by Tim. Just to note, there are six of us here. So all those in favor of moving into executive session, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, we will now enter executive session. We will resume at seven. We have just returned from executive session. It is 7:04. Can I get a motion to enter back into regular session? First by Gary, second by Amanda. Everyone okay with going back into regular session? Please say aye.
Aye.
All right, let's get this party started. First thing we're gonna do is the pledge of allegiance, Mr. Campbell. Day of Honor Day.
Pledge of allegiance to the Father, and to the Son, and to the Holy Spirit. And to the Republic, which stands in the name of our God, and to the people who live in this world.
Thank you. And we do have all seven board members present. I would like to get a motion to approve the minutes for the February 28th special board meeting. Can I get a motion on that? No? Oh shoot, I'm sorry, I skipped a page. Timeout, sorry, my fault. I was wondering. Please back up. We've got all seven members here. Let me back up to that. One of them is Tom Landen. When we get to the special meeting minutes approval, you will see that he has sworn in to fill the seat until election night. He's doing a temporary stint for us so that we can have a complete board. So now we are at our first opportunity for public comment. The board encourages public expression. At board meetings, speakers may comment on matters related to any agenda item. The board will not permit public session discussion involving individual district personnel or students. Persons wishing to discuss matters involving individual district personnel or students should present their comments or concerns to the superintendent during regular business hours. All speakers are to conduct themselves in a civil manner. Personal attacks and scene language, libel, statements, threats of violence, statements advocating ritual religious or other forms of prejudice will not be tolerated. Time allocated between call to comment is 30 minutes with the option to extend. There's a three to five minute allotted per speaker. We offer a comment period at the beginning of regular meeting and a second period at the end, but we do not receive comments at special board meetings. We ask speakers to identify themselves by name and address prior to speaking. The floor is yours if you would like to comment. Oh, I read that off of you guys. Okay. Since we have no one for public comment, there is an opportunity at the end if you'd like to regis this, so don't worry about that. Now we will move on to approving the regular minutes from the February 17th meeting. Can I get a motion on those meeting minutes? Okay, first Tim, second by Carrie. All those in favor of approving the February 17th meeting minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes. Right on to the next one. Can I get a motion to approve the meetings from the special board meeting on February 28th? First Carrie, second Amanda. All those in favor of approving the minutes from the February 28th meeting? That passes as well. Now we move on, sorry, I got a little confusion there, to the superintendent's report.
Okay, thank you Danielle. Just a couple of updates and good news, and then I'll get into the bulk of my report tonight. And then also, John Lawrence from State Street, Principal State Street, is joining us tonight for a brief update as well, so we'll get to John in just a second. First off, congrats to our varsity hockey team, who won a state championship last weekend in the fourth quarter of the Buffalo. It was just an amazing, amazing season, and we're awfully proud of them. Also, in the pride department, the play, The Little Mermaid, went off without a hitch, which frankly made us a little nervous because there was a lot of aerial and rope work that was going on.
It was excellent.
It was outstanding, and no injuries thankfully, and just unbelievably proud of how hard those kids worked for, you know, the weeks and months that go into that. It's just amazing. Our kids are so talented, the teachers, the amount of time that they spent is just awesome. So thank you to them. One little bit, a piece of good news loosely connected to one of our strategic planning goals of getting kids outside the bubble. Back at a professional event that I attended in, I think, October of this year, I made contact with an individual from EF Tours. Those conversations have turned into two international trips that the board will see for approval coming in the summer. One to London, England, and one to the Dominican Republic. So we'll have 16 international students having the benefit of some international travel. So that's pretty exciting. And then lastly, before I get to John, just an update that our curriculum, our newly conceived curriculum committee, full of applicants and invitees, will commence before our next board meeting. It will be 5 o'clock before our April board meeting. Invites will go out again, so that everybody's aware. This is always open to the public. For anybody that would like to attend, please come. But we will have a scanning committee between 10 to 14 people. So the idea for the April meeting is to establish, you know, what the function of the meeting will be, and then hopefully develop a curriculum calendar that we can bring to the board as soon as the summer or September, that everybody will know what the curriculum and many topics will be for the remainder of the year. So with that, any questions on my brief updates?
How are the kids chosen for the international travels?
It's all self-selected. So it's all kids that decide that they're interested and connect with parents and teachers.
And they're doing fundraising, is, you know, the pay your own pay. Or Danielle, making sure that it's equal opportunity for everyone?
So there are other opportunities that we're looking into that manage this sort of rut here, where EF Tours works with a teacher advisor, where they actually develop a fundraising plan, raise money that'll offset and cover the cost of the trip. So for the first foray with EF Tours, it is at your own expense, but that is something that's very much under radar, things that we're concerned with, looking forward.
Any other board members have questions? Any update on the kindergarten lottery?
Yes, a notice was put out with error from Waterman Elementary that said packets were available for pickup. So we feel that a few calls, I've messaged it, I've messaged it a few times now, just to let parents know that the entire process will commence in the month of April, and there is no information to share right now until April 1, other than the fact that we are staffed and budgeted for another single section if we can, including 14 kids, the same amount that we use this year for next year.
And you had to say, the lottery selection notification also occur within your sort of families to make alternative plans?
Yeah, the idea was between, at April start and either by the end of April or May 15th, wherever the board wants to set that finish line, we can put it wherever you want. But last year, we were done by May, and so we're ahead of the game. Sometimes it's a little too early, but we're ready to go. All that information will be shared in April.
Do you know our current kindergarten numbers? For the, for the current, do you mean?
Eighty-five slash, which is a huge, huge.
Maintaining the same number of sections so far?
So far, is that, that threshold probably at, what, 120 if we have to go to seven or something like that?
I'm ready to grant that, it's the same sections yet, but ninety-five this early is.
What do we, what is the current value here at 106? It's 100.
You know, again, I want to say that when you think of section sizes, many of us, what we think of, section sizes, in our minds, I, we think of our high school cells.
Not fair, Danielle.
Twenty, twenty, even thirty in a high school class is pretty common. Twenty in kindergarten class, that's a lot. But then, some of these kids are very little, they have a lot of needs still, and we've kept those numbers low intentionally because it's just a different level of service for the private kids in that age.
So the tipping point?
If this phenomenon continues, we will see those things start to creep up.
So the tipping point is how many students per session?
Don't quote that. I would say if you did 20 per student, 20 per class, that's, if you get exceptions, that's 120.
Twenty's usually a, for kindergarten, you know.
Does the 95 for the fall include any UPK applications in that number?
No.
So really, we're already at 110 in 10?
I'd have to confirm.
But you're saying you've got 95 on the radar for kindergarten, and we've got 14 kids in UPK, so you're at 110. So do we have a backup plan for states?
I wouldn't quote on that. I would say, Pat, 93 months ago, and the checkup was just 95 a couple weeks ago.
So if, if we do have to go to that second section, can we house that and UPK? Do we have that space? And if we do not, what is the plan being?
We will have to be very creative in solving that problem.
So we do not have space?
We would have to.
Within what?
We would probably end up with a section of, a greater, a larger section, or we, depending on how many kids it is, to, to maybe even to safely wash a few more kids to a whole grade level, but it really depends on that number. What I would say is that if this phenomenon continues, definitely, where we're seeing, you know, cohort numbers creep up, that will definitely play a factor in the decision to house UPK class at Waterman in the future.
Yeah, so we may want to tap knowledge that we may still have kicking around somewhere in the community from when we had a developmental kindergarten, because we, at one time, accommodated more students in a younger age into our schools, since we have the UPK program. And we've also got to keep in mind, it's good to watch the section size on kindergarten class expressly, because we did eliminate that developmental kindergarten opportunity for some of our youngest, some number of years ago. The ramifications of that were that we have somewhat larger kindergarten class potential or some, the kindergarten class maybe was greater needs, but adding smaller sections for, for classes.
One of the other conversations that we've had throughout, and it's really catch 22, is the federal funding comes with the rules and stipulations for how you still allot. So we've, we've talked about that a couple times at board meetings, where the DK option is very attractive to a lot of our, a lot of our families and teachers are huge proponents of it. That would come at the expense of all the federal funds, because that violates the rules of how we're allowed to cap those dollars. But another great opportunity to remind the public that when we look at our federal funding allotment, and it looks at over $350,000, that's a, that's a politicized figure, because it's $5,400 per student. You have room for one section of 14 kids, roughly $75,000, and that's the total funding we receive. Whether they allot $350,000, $100,000 last year, a billion next year, it doesn't change the fact that it's still per pupil count.
The other 10, 14? The other 10, 15,000 dollars, UPK students are application.
Right, so if we did an option like DK, we would have to forebill those federal funds entirely, because that would involve. Once you accept the federal funds, you accept the rules, and it is open lottery. There's a lot of talk of funding universal pre-K into the future, fully funding it, that, you know, all, all districts at some point in the future would be required. And that's, that sounds wonderful, really, but that would cause major reconfiguration conversations here, and that's not anything that's on our reconfiguration.
So to just keep us on track and with budget season, am I, could you, for the April meeting, just confirm with Pat, like, whatever number it is at that point, does that include our current UPK class holding? Hopefully it does.
That'd be my assumption.
But let's just, yeah, let's just check on that, and then if there is anticipation in Waterman for this fall, or if we need to start worrying about 24, 25, I think that's important for us all to know as we're looking at this year's budget as well, so just if you could help us get a better picture of that and what that's looking like, because it's not just one section in kindergarten, it turns into one section for the next three years.
Which we spoke about last year, if you guys remember, contingencies, 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 right? That's what gave rise to the initial question in terms of, if we're at 95 right now, and it goes up to 130, then what's a contingency? Now, I need to be rock solid, but we must have some sort of idea where it's gonna go. And then if you extrapolate it to what Dan just said, you know, okay, people are getting a taste of it and liking it and seeing the results of it, and as such, what will we have to do in the future? Having no ideas, the CD, the words of the fun stuff, you know, what do we need to be thinking about, you know, we go three to five a year, well, maybe a year, we go what happened three to five a year. So this would definitely, you can't oversell contingencies and follow the game.
And what would be helpful for me, and I don't want to speak for the other board members, at what grade level can we start absorbing those students without adding on a full section? So if it is the philosophy that Waterman's got to maintain that 20 kids per class, but once they get out to State Street, we can keep, we can go one less section and spread out five kids everywhere, and that's doable. I don't know if it's third grade, fourth grade, if it's no grade, but just to give us an idea so that we can see the downpour picture, that Waterman's adding five extra classes a year, forget about a grade difference, guys get that on their radar, but it won't be a problem at State Street, or it will be just through third grade, because that, that's a teacher, that's a body that we have to hire for, times two grades, three grades, four grades, whatever.
I think it could mean re-tasking staff, it could be retaking over different spaces, it could be larger, it will ultimately mean larger class sizes if that phenomenon continues. Because that, that bumper crop of kids that comes in, that's a 13-year phenomenon.
And at some point, they are reabsorbed into other larger classes. A chart would be awesome. Then we won't be guessing what we all think we know we're talking about, but just to show us a little direction.
For simple math, to 20 to 22 is kind of the industry standard kind of sweet spot number for, for sections, but that's different in kindergarten.
And I don't mean this to sound perfect, but it is. I don't care about that, turning back to getting out of this. I want to see for graduating class 31, or if I have kids graduating now, like, I don't know, 2050, we're gonna have five section for 2051, we're gonna have six sections, just so that I can follow them along, and when they.
In context of, I wouldn't know.
In context of this, just for telling me sections per grade is this.
John, John might be a nice segue.
Well, I'm thinking, yeah, Connor, the kindergarten numbers for the April meeting that you requested. I'd also like to see, like, facility study Plan B, because if we're looking at rolling out the UPK lottery in April or May, we still have all of April, May, June, July, and obviously people can register their kindergarteners, and they can register them anytime they're here. But we still have a significant number of months left that that class can grow, so where, where would we house these little bodies?
The only facility that we have is Waterman.
Your office.
We would have to make something happen.
That's why I want to know what happens. What is, what is the contingency plan here if that one grows?
There are spaces, there are spaces where we can take over a wall.
That's what I want to hear, what is.
Again, guys, come and get to this last day. We've got to get to this last day, so hopefully it's just a way on some of this stuff, that so many ideas we may have out floating around, to solidify it. As people see, program, experience it.
And they like it.
Exactly, it attracts more interest. 14 is still 14, is still 14. But as you leave, it's lower than 95. That's the only one that we have. Correct, yeah. So maybe time to formalize, I think, what, what matters with it now, is to actually formalize some sort of, what a contingency really looks like as a boost.
I think Amanda, some of those nice needs that are up at Waterman, those areas that are there, can be sort of back to the original purpose of classrooms, yeah, because there's a lot of space up there that can be utilized as classrooms, which has been previously used as classrooms, right?
Right, thank you. These numbers are great for us, enough to just get out of the yesteryear, of the yesteryear. We also have a lot of services that we are now providing, though those classrooms are beat, those spaces are.
But services can be privately made office, not a classroom, right?
Service services.
A lot of them are smaller, but we have some of those spaces as well, so. There, there is, there is space to accommodate this already, if that is the issue. If it becomes a 13-year phenomenon, that's an absolute, all of a sudden, there's great reconfigurations and building improvements and things like that, we're not there yet, but it is encouraging to see, good sense of ambition there.
So if we could just, just to keep us not getting any leads up, how we're gonna recover this everyone at Waterman, if we could just get a plan from you, Pat, whoever, Connor, just saying, we, we've identified three spaces at Waterman, we're gonna create classrooms if we get to that point, or we have zero spaces and, or begin in the model trailer, whatever the solution is, just to give us some concrete, this is option A. If it gets worse, this is option B, and this is option C, and you guys don't worry about it, we've already cleaned out all the room closets, and they're gonna make lovely. Yeah, study that example, whatever. But if we could just see some specific options, just so that we know if we have to go school trailers or whatever there.
We're, we're a couple years away from the trails.
Great, good answer, good answer. Any other board members have questions for Eric?
All right, thanks, John.
Good evening, everyone. On behalf of State Street's monthly board of education, thank you for your support. We do appreciate it, and we know it's there, so thank you so much, we all do do well. And we appreciate your dedication to our staff, our students at Waterman, and all of your work for all of us, so thank you. State Street is doing a lot of liberating things. We are in a very confident spot. I think after the pandemic, being flexible with spaces, with numbers, with where we're placing kids, we're all pretty much back on it. We are running four sections across the board, typically at Waterman, you know, picking back up with previous conversation, if Waterman's at six, we go to five, if Waterman's at five, we go to four, and that's, you know, consolidating third grade, and we're trying to consistently keep that through the building. We are getting tighter, which is a good thing, but I think right now, State Street, and it pans out, there's plenty of space, we're in the pandemic, Waterman ran seven sections during the pandemic. We ran six sections, and we have plenty of space for all the kids, so that's a good thing. So just to touch quickly on a couple of things, at State Street academically, we continue to improve daily, weekly, year to year. Within the LA, our third year of our curriculum is going really, really well. Teachers have internalized what they're teaching, how they're teaching and how they're collaborating with data that we're collecting. We just had a team of teachers from Durham Village coming in last week and spend time in grades three, four, and five, and they're amazed, not only by the interest and engagement that's placed in the classroom, but generally by the feel of the building and how receptive the kids were, how, how excited they were to share their stories and share their answers, and the passion the teachers shared with the teachers from Durham Village in all of these that take place. For tier one instruction with math, the LA science, we are right on track for we to be providing really solid instruction across all grade levels, and for all our students, the shift around the master schedule for the past couple of years, ensuring that all students are in their classrooms during all those tier one times, which is really important for us. When we flip the stage to the intervention side of things, we've increased math interventions almost exponentially. Mr. Cohen is here, he's going to allow, he's allowed, so now the math side, but I'll tell you, we're servicing more kids, we're diagnosing the specific needs in a much more detailed way, we're providing kids the exact intervention they need, and we're seeing great success in the math side. For reading, we've also increased the capacity of our staff to provide more interventions. I think it's, you know, when we diagnose or can diagnose greater needs, we have to address those needs and find them, and we're doing that with our interventions, especially education teachers, and our faculty, just taking all of that, all that data and finding ways to make sure that students are meeting their needs in a really positive way. With science, we've incorporated the new science investigations, another kind of shop in New York State, we're gonna take all those requirements from the state, and among the coming in June, Aaron Brown, our staff teacher, is right on top of that, we've already started the new science investigations, and just so you know, with the new science test next year, we are required by the state for grades three, four, and five to guarantee that these students are receiving four of these New York State science investigations. There are things that our teachers are already familiar with, and I'll take care of that this year and next for our current fourth grade, they're looking to take a particular test next year. One good thing that I love about State Street is the fact that every morning is possible. I mean, we have Coach Rose and Coach Rosack providing morning miles for any student that wants to come on two days a week. We have our music ensemble with Mrs. Ma, Mrs. Beckman, have three or four mornings a week with band, chorus, orchestra. We have MBK, they're providing morning yoga for students, and we have our third grade team, new books and papers, like, the mornings. On top of that, the soccer games in the back, and football games in the front, and kids in the playground every morning, bikes and scooters, and all that stuff. It's, it's, the morning is really, really exciting, and it's exciting to turn around throughout the day. Our special area teachers do an incredible job, providing students with really engaging content within, you know, STEM side communities. Every single day, our kids are coming home from school, hopefully sharing some of the excitement that they see, and every day, you know, our teachers do a great job for the cold, the rain, the wind, to get kids outside, to recess as a parent of kids that rush in and see a pack in, fortune, kids are skating outside, get recessed outside, every single day, experiencing, you know, the joy of Upstate Springs, and also just taking on the time to be themselves, to be kids, to break from the rhythm of the fashion, and just have a good time with each other. So that in a nutshell is what's going on at State Street. We've got a ton of relationships planned for the spring. Our S E F funds come in really, kind of play for that, and the district's greatest supporting things on the transportation side, and our teachers find great ways to engage students in the community, whether it's Baltimore Woods. In the fall, fifth grade always goes to around the Springs, but go to the schoolhouse in Stafford, to go to the year round in Camillus, so lots of really cool things happening outside of school as well. On top of all, the walking footchips, the judge pad, or the ladder, that are also in that game. So things are going really, really well. Stamping wise, we're in great shape for next year. We have one vacancy, and we're hiring our first member from U S to fill that vacancy next summer. So all in all, things are going really, really well.
On the challenges, if you want to share a few with the board.
Yeah, of course. There are some certain challenges that we're facing. You know, one thing I think that's really important, is hoping the public hears, we're still seeing a lot of agencies in students. Our staff, actually, it's really, really bad since the pandemic, we're still seeing, when I look at the national board today, and often kind of two pages, that's a concern. You know, typically, before the pandemic, it was like that long, and almost every single day, there's kids that are absent for numerous reasons, or leaving school earlier, coming late. And I can say for the younger students, I think in the fall, we just had a ton of losses. Between COVID, COVID-19, COVID, between a couple nasty bouts at stomach bug, we just had a lot of get sick, and those little immune systems are certainly getting, you know, kickstarted back after the COVID mask, so on. We're seeing that increase, those attendance rates get better, but we're still seeing some errands, bringing students in late, or picking up way too early often, and it's just a matter of communicating with families at school's word, we need kids to be in school every day as much as possible, because every minute, they're gonna learn something, whether it's planning or not, there's always something taking place. Another challenge on the physical side of things, that I set up three years ago at PTC, and Mr. Santoro, I had some good conversations, beautifying State Street. You know, it's the most visible building in the district, it gets the most traffic in the district. The outside's getting better, we had some, you know, poles, shrubs, or trees taken down to clean it up a little bit on the outside. The inside needs a really big facelift. We need to brighten up spaces, we need to get, you know, consistent colors inside the building, get rid of some tote or patches, you know, and make the buildings brighter and more, more.
It's been a kitchen budget now.
Right, well, it is. If you have, kind of, the State Street library got painted last summer, and it came out wonderfully. And try to carry that theme of maybe a goal throughout the building, to make it feel more like getting out, is a big priority for leading for the building, and that's gonna be, you know, I think we'll start to see really good improvements this spring, and on the summer, too. The Capitol project is gonna make a lot of necessary infrastructure improvements. The gymnasium is gonna look beautiful, still the same size, but look beautiful and brighter next year, and so is the cafeteria, but interior spaces just need to get brightened and freshened up. One of the last challenges, and I'm not sure, I have some ideas why we're seeing this, but we're seeing a really high number of CSC referrals, really, really high, and it's just bogging us down in a lot of ways. And I'm talking to families, we understand there's concern for students, we understand that some students are still a little behind, we know that, parents know that, but when we have CSC referrals, obviously we have a legal requirement to meet those things. However, it does play a toll on our special education teachers, our school psychologists, and our speech pathologists. Instead of doing the things that they should be doing, is teaching kids, helping students succeed. succeed, providing assessments, doing really lengthy reports. We always expect some, I don't know if we're seeing an awful lot of those. And I think to help that, the biggest thing families can do, if you're concerned about your child, give us a call. We want to be the first best source of information for children. We know what's going on with kids and what they need. And if we haven't communicated that enough, we're happy to communicate. We'll be see what progress students are making, what the challenges are. We have the four parents, we have parent conferences, we have parents where. But if you need more, just give us a call and we'll, whatever we can, set up team meetings to make sure parents feel comfortable about what's happening with their students at school. Because we do parent a lot of our students, our teachers are great and we want to make sure parents feel comfortable about it and what we're doing.
So I'm hearing you that you have a number of C S E requests, evaluation requests by parents who have not gone through and spoken with the teacher and spoken with you and spoken with the interventionists.
Correct, correct.
Can you weigh like a percent on that of?
I mean, it's not like 15%. That would be, that would be crazy. But it's, I would say for the most part, when we are receiving the C S E referral, I'd say close to 95% of the time, it's like, it's outside. Or, you know, we thought we would talk about a referral in the year from now if we didn't see progress. And maybe a lot of times progress is being made. It does fast as some parents want or as fast as we want, but we can always tweak and some make improvements there. So.
Yeah, the other key point there too is that, you know, a special education designation doesn't allow us to do anything often that we're not overhealing. So through our R T I process or our intervention services, often it's the same services kids would already be receiving. We've already identified some of them. A special education designation basically guarantees a student access to those evaluations on the Davis State exam. Every other day, they can just have them.
You know, we are really able to provide accommodations where necessary. If something is going to help a student succeed or make them feel more comfortable, we're going to do that. We're going to do that anytime, taking assessment, you know, with a trusted adult or in a smaller setting or whatever it is will help students make sure they feel comfortable, whatever we do.
Have the parents offered any insight on why they're jumping to the evaluation before the conversations?
I think in the community, there's some misinformation out there that this is a quick easy fix. And it's not, you know, if a parent in the community has a child with an I P, they know it's not, it's not imaginable, it's not acceptable, but it's something that takes a lot of hard work to try to close those gaps year to year to year. And to get a, to get years from a growth or anything takes a full year, but if you're a young and a behind, it's not a big time to close those gaps. So I just think there's some misinformation. You're going to call us, call our teacher calling, and we'll look at the bottom of what concerns are.
So at the beginning of the talk, you mentioned the additional quantitative data that, for example, Mr. Cohen is assembling related to the performance of students. Is there a potential gap between the school's knowledge of how our kids are doing and how much of that has floated back to the parents? I mean, I'm not trying to overthink it there. If you're concerned about your child, you're concerned about your child. Yeah, at the same time, frequently, parents only get a view of their own family. They don't necessarily see how their child is doing compared to the cohort.
And I think with, with our work on interventions in the outside, like with a student receiving intervention at school, a tier two, a tier three, parents are getting a letter, stamp ID or sign ID, so they understand exactly as well. And the intervention, the specific target, the skill, the work they have, and they will get updates, you know, quarterly or more if we did this or see progress. If a student needs a certain threshold, they get a letter exiting them out of that, out of the interventional state. This child was here, now they're here, and because of that, they don't need this intervention. We're going to move them to this one, or they don't even want it off. So, you know, we do get our fault too in top of our interventions, especially if there's a great individual in parents. And I think, as I said earlier, we've increased the number of students receiving interventions drastically over the last two years.
As we become more sophisticated with identifying needs, the services themselves, especially with the literacy action plan, become incredibly targeted. It's not just a, you struggle with reading, it's here's why you struggle with reading, and here's the point in the services that the more place. So take away the reading force, contact the school force.
Are there other buildings seeing the same trend? Waterman and middle school, are they also seeing the same trend? Because if they're not, I would say we need to narrow our focus in on what is happening at State Street? Is it those COVID kids are finally kind of hitting that wall? Or is it communication testing?
I think it's partly COVID related. I also think there's a huge jump in rigor between second, third grade. And if parents feel that all of a sudden, it's that, that sort of panic.
But I push back, there's always been that jump. There's always the move from learning to read to reading to learn. And if the other buildings aren't experiencing this, we do need to dive a little deeper on why is it happening at State Street?
I would say that's where that shift happens. It doesn't happen at middle school, it doesn't happen at Waterman. Learning to read, reading to learn, that is a great secret life, right? For 90, 80% of our students. And I think another thing I've talked to parents about, and it's, and I think this has always happened for a long time too, Mr. Verrierde, the middle school principal, we want to make sure these kids are ready for middle school because they're going to fail from middle school. I say that because that's not what happens. I think the middle schools are phenomenal buildings. It's a blue ribbon school. I hope that their status has been given. They're crushing it. Students are not feeling the middle school. But parents have this anxiety that they're going to get there, they're going to fall apart because the middle school is this really challenging place. And I think that's another piece of communication that this should be to be better. Every school does a good job supporting students.
But just to get back to the point you asked in terms of, if you haven't seen a shift in the other schools, right? If we don't actually, we don't have data. If you haven't seen a similar shift, then it would require a study.
Do you think this is a social issue?
Let me just, just before you answer that, the second thing is you're looking at your year over year numbers right at State Street. So on a macro scale, they're like developing. And then on a micro, you're just comparing your numbers year over year. So we do know, we do know you have that shift, that you reported that the shift is, is a lot larger amount of people applying for the C S E, going for the C S E.
And I would say this too, when we go from two referrals a year to eight, that it's only six more, right? But percentage wise, that's an awful lot more than, than we're typically used to handling. And it's time to use.
Is that an accurate number though? Would you say you only get eight?
I would say right now, I don't want to disquote, so I can give that information to you, but that's pretty realistic.
Now, I wouldn't say it's a lot, but my district's different.
It could be 11 to 30, right? So, but again, we didn't have a lot to begin with, which is good. And we do have referrals from the teachers as well, but we're seeing a lot of those. And once that happens, you know, this dude's time's there. And if we get three or four within a week, that's really hard to manage.
Do parents jump right to the written request so they have to do it? Or so they're not taking the R T I process? Or then was it 95? I heard you say 95%. What percentage of those eight actually turned out to be getting I P, which is a small percentage?
It's a small percentage. We're seeing some that, you know, speaking, it's not my job to identify students for C S E because that's my new job. But if you ask me, if this kid be eligible for an I P, when they're completely on a grade level for every standard we can see and every assessment we get, pretty hard to say that they're going to qualify.
Yeah. And I don't mean this against parents at all, but do you think parents are putting in the work at home? Because I'll say, I had a child that was, she got A I S till fifth grade and it was grueling every night. We sat with her and let me tell you, there were nights we didn't want to do it, but oh my God, something clicked in fifth grade and she, you know.
I think our parents do a lot. I can't say that I've learned from parents for students not succeeding. But I don't think you ever tell the students not succeed. But one thing basically, what you said too, if the middle school kids mature, and I think there's a pushback at the middle school that, like, leave me alone, I'm fine. That happens. So that State Street is just that, that spot where at Waterman, the learning to read is taking place. And at middle school, kids are more independent, they get it, they understand the strategy, they need to be successful. It's just building a State Street that's really just kind of carrying and broadens us this concern.
It's inclusive.
Exactly.
But you say here?
It's inclusive. If it's only a year's agenda.
One of the phenomena that we're trying to manage is that when you have a bunch of C S E referrals, the psychometric testing and the hours associated with that completely monopolize our school psychologist's time. And we have a rare school psychologist at State Street who's a gifted counselor as well as a psychological clinician. And that's, that's not always the case. And it's real, fortunately in our district, we have a lot of people like that, which is wonderful, but that's pretty rare. So that with all the S E L concerns, with all the mental health concerns that kids are bringing to us, it does eat up some of our ability to provide some of those counseling services too. So that's a concern.
I think we have to be careful because again, if you have an increase in requests for the C S E bed, and of those increased numbers, you have 10%, I'm just speaking numbers up. You've got 10% or maybe you have 20% that validate the parents' requests, we have to become some of that. And again, I've moved towards my numbers, but you have some metrics that you can use to say, all right, listen, this is how we do our assessment and when we have all the exploits we have that are happening. However, parents have many C S E, they're evaluated under all of that. From the technical reasons that we said, then we're required, we got four or three or something like that, you know?
We support the note too, like alert stability is a serious thing. We're not going to say that a child is, you know, alert stability. We don't know, we're certain that they are. You know, that's, it's not something you just want to throw around in the lab.
We're also not playing defense for services. Right? We've been over actors regardless of the special education designation. If there's a struggling child, we will.
And on the flip side, if you have a child you're concerned about and the parents aren't on board yet, so you treat them as though they do. You just give them a certain, you know what I mean? So you.
It's strange we have, you know, a couple of years ago, there were students that we brought the C S E and they qualified, those qualified, the parents respect. We don't, we don't want that. Didn't change anything before we did the class and that's fine. And now we see that the pension shifted where, you know, it's a different class. And if we don't think, believe that child, that committee qualifies for an I P, there's perspective, they need that to be successful. So.
I hear this from my colleagues that this is like, this is a phenomenon.
This has become like a social, a not, a social is not the right word, but this is, is this, some of this, do you feel like, listen, everybody here is trying to advocate the best for their child, right? And is there some of, some fear that if I am not advocating this strongly for my child to also get this same assessment because I know that you did it and you had success, so I am going to do it? And maybe my kids, I think that they're struggling. Is there my kid? Everyone, you know, you're more sensitive to yours.
Parents are concerned.
And so it worked for you, I'm going to write, give me that form letter. I'm going to send it to the school as well, which is creating this increase in workload or evaluation or whatever. So is there, if that is driving some of it, which may or may not be true, is there a way that we can combat that, be more proactive in education of the parents on, this is the whole picture of how it works. This is how the special M 504, C P S E, this is how it works, this is how I fit into it, this is how this person fits into it. Can we cut it off?
Are you sure that last few months, you know, Mr. Cohen's been here, a staff designation, and Mrs. Penelope's been here on the literacy action demonstration, there weren't any parents here? Right? So how more can we communicate so that our parents know what we're doing is high quality, is aligned to the standards, is rigorous, and it's really targeted to make students feel comfortable and be successful? We can have all the pieces around, we want to be.
I don't know what the solution is, but if we boil all of this down to it, it's trust.
I was going to say.
And so what can we do as a district to increase the trust? And we do need to go back and really look at what's happening in State Street. Is it a social phenomenon where parents are talking to each other? That might be a piece of it, but we can't control that. So what can we control? That's communication, building trust. Are those teachers really reaching out to those parents as often individually as they maybe could be? Not just a class update, not just that it was a great week, but hey, this individual and, you know, we can only control what we can control. So what can we do proactive in State Street?
I think too, if we look at our measure at school, we look at the calls that students are doing, if everything is green on our end, if we're going to take that communication as a verbal, if parents are feeling that there's been something, you know, not working correctly, something they feel there's, there's students struggling, we need to hear that from parents. That would go a long way. If, you know, notice the good news. I say that in a joking way, but if you look at the assessments, the different schools of the day, they're having, they're having fun. They've got great friends. Their favorite part of these recess, that's okay, that's normal, right? You, your kid goes home and you say, how's Dick? It was great. It was more. I mean, that's, that's a typical response for a lot of kids. So if you are concerned, pick the phone, call the teacher, send them the mail, and I promise you will get back to you.
You know, some of this, this is that we, we have gotten what we asked for too. We've said long for years now, don't suffer in silence. But if you have a need, please voice, voice your need. I think there's, there's a challenge now between, okay, how now that we've asked for this, how do we receive the input? And then how do we rejig ourselves to provide a response that's helpful to this family getting at it?
And I do want to, want to go back to my initial statement, things are going really well. It's, you know, but this, this is such a challenge for sure. Overall, things are still going great. Overall, we have tons of smiling kids. Overall, our teachers feel supported and feel, you know, happy to come to work. And that's not how it is everywhere. It's not.
I mean, that's distracting for me. So. I'm still glad, I don't need to beat this up. So they send in a request, they want their child tested or, what triggers it? What, what, what do they use as evidence to say this is the reason why? Is there any facts that I guess is in?
No, it is, it is a challenging situation because sometimes in a referral request, it'll say, please only respond to email. Please only reply to email. Please, you know, keep everything in print. That's fine, we will, but sometimes the conversation, of course, can you tell us exactly what you're concerned about? People are reading. Reading is a really, really deep subject area. What about reading? What specific things are you concerned about? So that's, it's a tough situation when we're requested, we have to respond with our particular way.
We don't have the loose side of the fact too, that parents love their kids, but they get emotional about that.
You know, I've got four kids, I've got kids in, you know, 40 buildings of West N C and I've got a lot of their kids that the parents will say, you know, I'm sorry we're coming out aggressive, but listen, we all want the same thing. Like, we're not trying to keep anything from your kid. We don't want your child to fail. We all want these kids to be successful. We don't want them to feel confident. We're fighting for the same thing. And there's times that teachers are advocating for students, it's asking students that parents are concerned about. Let's bridge that, that communication gap to make sure everyone's kind of pulling for the same thing and just takes cross states and issues.
But I think too, so most of these kids that are in State Street now spent, listen, their like early learning years at home, learning from their couch with a computer, right? Because they were the COVID, they were in Waterman during COVID, right? So now they're with you, just do me a, so their mom and dad were home, like, I have no idea what this math is, add up the tens, put the sevens floating in the air, roll them back in at the bottom, like the answer is 712. So we're all still trying to figure that out as parents. So there's this deficiency on the parents' part, like, I don't fully understand this. There's no way my kid understands it. Now they're back in regular school for two years now, three years, whatever, back from COVID. There's a concern on their part, maybe it's in their subconscious, maybe it's just the stress of having taught English in math on your couch for a year and a half. And this, I, I, my kid is going to be entering the big time soon. They're going to that big scary middle school. I feel like this is hard for them. And maybe they just don't understand it's supposed to be hard. So there's a misunderstanding or misalignment with what your expectation is. We want your kid to struggle a little bit because they're learning. It shouldn't be the easiest thing and maybe we can keep communicating it.
Eric was in a P D session, it was in the fall or in September and summer. Had great discussions about the job to show. That's a real. Had great discussions about the job to show. That's a real thing. You know, school isn't always supposed to be easy. If it was easy, you know, you learn the best when you struggle, you learn the best when you fail and have a chance to improve. So I think that's a part of it. And I think the COVID years, March 16th, April, May, June, everyone stopped, right? We were open the next year. We were, we did better than anyone else. We had 93% of our K5 population in seats. Every day, the teacher in front of them. So I can say that that's a huge indicator that students are going to be failing now.
Right. I'm just, and I'm not saying it's factual. I'm saying in people's mind, there is this struggle. And I'm watching my kids struggle now, which certain parent who has COVID PTSD is like, oh no, they're struggling because of all that happened and they're falling behind and they're going to be further behind. And even though you're going, no, 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 this would have happened without COVID because this is, this is what's supposed to occur. It's, it's hard for people. And I don't know how we communicate yet and understand that some of this is natural and good, but we have to keep communicating it.
Right. So the COPs coming up in May, we've got, you know, we've got a conference coming up next month. And again, if the phone call gets called, she was, you know, we will be able to build that trust and ensure parents that we all have your child's best interests at heart.
One more question for you, Jonathan, not on this subject, do you? So you mentioned you had all those, you know, morning mile, yoga, Bible books, all those things.
Yes.
And just ask these kids, and this isn't a question or just something to think about, especially for like your fifth graders that will be going to middle school next year and for the second half of the school year. And this is a question that I've asked Steve Lewis over the past year. When you look at your student population and you see who's involved in some of these things, I mean, some kids just don't like to get up early and that's fine. But are there students that you're kind of starting to pick up on your radar or your school psychologists are and kind of saying, this kid, we offer all of these things, Odyssey of mine, Pokemon, Girl Scouts, whatever. And this one student is disengaged in everything, including things that they might do that are not related with the school, like soccer or whatever, to kind of.
We, we do look at, we do look at our numbers for those things, those extracurriculars. And I can see the fact that our kids aren't engaged in something either before or after school has been my example of that.
So I get concerned about the kids that's not leached in any of those things.
We, we just had a great meeting with a parent last week about a student that seems interested in school. And if you're about to some of those things, what can we do to lure this child in? And we're, yeah, so we are aware, we're taking proactive steps for those things.
Working parents, they do.
Yeah. And that's, you know, and it doesn't work for everybody. I just feel like it's a great opportunity to expose them to their, maybe other things.
They go and get them.
So that when they get to middle school, they are already getting the nudge to, that you can find a spot to belong.
Who goes to our transportation department? Like, there's, you know, if it's a morning line, if it's a morning van, they pick them up. And, you know, our facility lets them in the building and our, you know, we've got kids hanging out in the office in the morning. It's a good thing.
Waiting for you.
Yes.
You running a March Madness bracket down there?
That would involve, involve some.
Well, you can't, I'm just kidding. Do you believe, are you lost? Any other questions, Mr. Lawrence?
I was going to pass my, I'm keeping it to five minutes, but you.
I did, I did. Thank you, Jonathan. Good job. Thanks so much.
No, it's not your fault. You're right.
The, the next piece here, I'm just going to, bear with me one second on the stream, my screen. All right. As, as scheduled, way back when we started our strategic plan last fall, it is March and it is time for a strategic planning update. So I will, I will spare you reading this entire document to you. But I do want to orient you to a couple of things. If you look at this, it's always listed as a draft because it's a living document. And we always change it. See the data today as the most recent updates for ease of use. Everything that we are already doing is highlighted in green. Everything that we are currently working on is highlighted in orange. And it is way too vast and comprehensive to cover everything tonight. So I did want to keep the focus mostly on Mr. Brown's budget presentation for the evening is, is be brief and highlight a little bit of our work, especially what the staff is willing to be engaged in at our professional development day tomorrow. So the first question is, who plans a professional development day on St. Patrick's Day, very March Madness? We do. So we'll, we'll try our best to have, have some fun with it, but we're, we're off and running. So just a quick refresher of the strategic plan as you go through the process for blueprint planning. We are right here, draft mission, vision, core values developed by the Board of Education. I'm sorry, this is in March of last year. We're in the review part of the process where we share progress. You get another progress update in June. And then over the summer months, team meets, we revise our, our work for next year, add new goals, make sure that the things that are not yet completed get completed and it continues from there. Couple of things I wanted to draw your attention to, always start with our mission, vision, and core values. And I highlighted a couple of key words because they're important. And this is what the community asked for, that's pretty cool. In Connor's presentation, and you'll see right after mine, is that, you know, they say, if you want to see what people value, look at their budget and see what they budget for. So much of what appears in the budget and the funding decisions that were made are right out of this community strategic plan. So first off, in the mission, every student on the cycle will have opportunities and support to develop strong relationships for meaningful connections and explore multiple pathways for lifelong career. Focus on the effort for our vision, we'll read it through, we'll admit it, welcome to this place. Core values, learning, gather, all of us, all the time. But those are, those are really bold, comprehensive statements. And those lead us right into our key priority areas where we talked about learning opportunities. And we, we said, this came from the community feedback, we will foster high expectations, rigorous instruction, inclusive learning opportunities, and student engagement. And for the purposes of this evening and for our work tomorrow and some of our strategic planning work that I really want to highlight is this inclusive learning piece. For the last two years, we focused so much on relationships. We focused so much on connections, all the SCL work we've done, all the mental health work and all the, the professional development, learning, the focus on relationships and connections. The learning piece here is, was strategically placed third to the relationships and connections. But those relationships and connections don't come at the expense of high expectations and rigor. And that's what makes this place so special. So when we start talking about inclusive education, I think a good first step is to tell you what an inclusive education means. So for our professional development trainers that are coming tomorrow from Syracuse University and InclusiveSchooling.com, if you want to read up all about them, they say the following, inclusive education means we no longer accept that separate classrooms, separate schools, separate lives are in the best interest of any student. Separating people by ability disadvantages everyone. The longing is a human need. Our educational system practices and spaces need to be reimagined. Inclusive education means every student is valued because of their strengths, gifts, and even challenges. As disability is simply diversity. Everyone benefits from meaningful participation and opportunities to learn rate level content with diverse peers. We must trust that all students come to us as incredible old people who do not need to be fixed. I love that last line. So when we start talking about inclusive education, the common misconceptions that we're talking about students with disabilities or we're talking about E and L students. And we are talking about that, but we're talking about everybody else too. Every single student in every single classroom has diverse learning needs. They have unique things that they're good at, strengths. And for the purposes of, of our team, by definition, of the inclusive schooling is pretty simple. It is high quality education and instruction for every kid. And that is what is going to be the focus of the start tomorrow with our school. I sent the board and the entire staff feedback from Kristi and Julie that came and actually observed classes and highlighted a lot of the positive things that are happening in our school. I'll read just a couple of them to you. Basically, they talk about the strengths. Our educators are knowledgeable, talented, experienced, and excited about their individual content areas. Our educators have essential relationships with students. It is clear that your teachers see relationships as key to the directions with their students. You have staff in each classroom, which leads to wonderful possibilities. Students engage with one another and the content. And then they gave us some recommendations for growth on going PD. And that is really where tomorrow starts. We've spent several months doing this work, engaging with Julie and Kristi as a leadership team, so that our team built capacity with inclusive schooling. Fortunately, our school district has had a lot of experience with John Hattie's research in high effect size instructional strategies. If anybody really wants to go deep on that with me, I'll send you some documents. It's pretty amazing stuff. It was a longitudinal research study that identified strategies in classrooms that had an actual effect on learning. And there are so many to choose from. After tomorrow, while we reiterate some of this work with our faculty that's already familiar with it, we're simply asking, use the magic tricks, try some things, let us know if it works. We're going to talk about access points. How many different opportunities does each child in your class have to access the content in the class? It's pretty simple. Like I said, they have a really, I think have a beautiful definition of inclusive schooling, but quite simply, it's about high quality instruction. So if you go through our, our strategic plan, and you see some of the items that are there. Bear with me a second here. Here again, priority areas. So priority one, learning opportunities. Inclusive instruction is right out of our strategic plan. So this professional development, it's not a surprise. It's not out of nowhere. It is right out of plan. It has existed. Professional development to analyze our current instructional practices about how we provide access to all learners in inclusive environments. Professional development for inclusive schools. We started this in December, January, and now you see the date there, 3/17. So as you go through this, this document, and I, like I said, I will send it to you first thing tomorrow morning so you can read the entire document, you can see so many of the, the different things that have been included in the plan and completed in green. One of the other areas that I think is probably the, one of the heaviest lifts that we've engaged in is revision of our RTI and MTSS plan. Education is terrible with acronyms. RTI is response to intervention, which just basically means, what are we doing? How do we know it's working? And what do we do if it's not? MTSS is sort of a larger umbrella that encapsulates RTI and also added some of the SCL and mental health components. How are our kids doing? Well, we asked them this year through the BIMAS and some of the feedback that we got was a lot. It did, because it allowed us to intervene in some really acute situations for kids that were struggling. The, the plan is comprehensive, right down to what tools you use, how do you evaluate the measures? How do you project growth? How do you communicate that to parents? And we've had, I don't know, Connor, Greg, I'll give you about six, seven hours of meetings to revise that point as well now. So that would be something that I intend to bring to our reord meeting in July, is that we can adopt a new updated actuary of our strategic plan for the district in July. So in the absence of sort of reading this entire document to you, is there anything, are there any questions or anything specific that you want to hear about?
I think the other piece, you know, as we talk about social phenomenon in the community, the other one that's floating around out there is enrichment. And so as you are meeting and taking a look at how MTSS has served, what can we do to be proactive about that piece? Making sure that those kids that are on rate level are not just sitting in classroom while interventions are being given.
Right. One of the really nice things about the Wilson reading program, the curriculum that we've adopted, is that there are tier one enrichment opportunities built right into the curriculum, higher level, more complex texts, more in-depth skills.
But you know that. Does the parent know that?
They, they do now.
So some of them, right?
We've, we've had a heavy left to do that for some others, yeah.
Catching on.
Yeah. And really, enrichment is the same thing as remediation. It's differentiated instruction. And that is something that I think so many of us do really, really well. And there's certainly opportunities for growth and experimentation. Tomorrow is about our entire staff, hearing from, learning from Kristi and Julie about how to do that. And so things to try, and we'll measure and see if they're working.
Any other questions, Mr.?
Going through the timeline, the next update will be in June. And then there's, there's some larger group type opportunities where we'll probably try to bring a whole strategic plan committee back together. And how some people have moved on, kids graduated, people have moved on. So it's an opportunity to bring people back into it. But what's really nice about this is that this is a roadmap that we laid out together as one skinny analyst family between the summer and the fall. And as you go through it, you'll see all the things that, that are completed now. And there's, there's a lot of things that we're still working on. Some of these items, although they're listed as green and complete, there are things that we have to do forever. So we're constantly looking at that. It's, it's meant to be an iterative process. It's not supposed to be a plan that just sits on a shelf and collects dust. And we said, we did that. And they segue for Connor because, like I said, if you want to see what people really care about, look at their budget and see what they invested. And that's what Connor's about to share. I'm also proud of this. I think our community came up with just unbelievably real and enlightened goals for what they want school to be like in this community. I think we were spot on with our, our focus on relationships and connections as precursors for the learning. I have said since I started here that that is really the magic of this place is the connection between adults and kids, caring enough to connect the content that kids experience. And most of our kids, hopefully, someday, all of our kids, knowing that they're surrounded by living adults.
Is there any piece down here that's kind of one that has been the hardest to tackle? The not that you just can't seem to track, the red?
The, the RTI plan is the heaviest stuff that's, that's not done. You'll see that's, that's listed here. And it's, it seems that each and every stone we don't turn, that we overturn, becomes another really heavy, heavy philosophical, philosophical conversation about what's the right way to do this. The fact that really the social, emotional RTI piece, the social, emotional, mental health piece was not included at all in our previous RTI plan. So much of that, you will see included down there. As I send it to you, if you have questions or things you want to talk about, give me a call, ask anything that you ask. I'll share with the entire board. And we'll continue to update this document and go from there. Thank you so much.
Thanks. Connor, the floor, my friend, is yours. Let's do this, just manage this group of words.
Soon as they get this finished.
If you guys want to move your chairs, because you can't just turn in your net, feel free.
Connor, are you still going to have March Madness up?
I want to know how COVID's doing.
All right. So yes, good segue here for preliminary budget conversations. The focus of this is not to just listen. The purpose is to give information, to drive a conversation with the conclusion of this, to walk out of here with a directive of where this tax catch should be, to build a budget on, to be approved at any point in the year. So feel free to jump in whenever. Again, obviously talking, there's more, there's more stuff. On this presentation, I don't know what was last, but I'll fly through the information I gave you guys last time for those of you guys that weren't here. So just agenda, some of the additional things. Again, just start with our mission, vision, strategic, strategic plan that should drive our strategic making, that should drive our budget, and what you'll see in our cost drivers and our initiatives. That's exactly what it is. That's exactly what it is. So we'll talk about the budget drivers, the cost savings. Look at the three-part budget, the numbers of all. Obviously preliminary, because this is basically all in. And then if there's a tax cap that might be lower, I have to adjust that going forward. But then you get into that. For the tax cap scenario, what we asked for last time was, what's the floor? Give it something in the middle. And then what's, obviously, the max is the tax cap. So basically, these are the areas. And basically, the other stuff is what you heard last time, but we'll cover that as well. So again, like Eric said, this should drive our decision-making. Our mission, our vision, our core values, relationship connection and learning. Our priorities, learning opportunities, excellence in human capital, community partnerships, and the environment. As we said, that's what's driving our budget this year more than ever. Propositions that'll be on, just as a refresher, the normal general fund budget, the purchase of four school buses, and then the library levy increase of four percent.
Which has nothing to do with us. We are just the piece of paper that we need to put their levy on.
Please note, libraries proposition is under the level of the school budget.
Magic. You knew it.
So yes, all we do for libraries act as a collection agency. They run their own books. We don't know their numbers. We just collect through the tax levy. It's just added on your tax bill, and then we shift that money to them. And again, just act, school taxes fund the schools, and the library funds the library. So they are looking for a four percent increase. They don't have to be on the proposition unless they're going off for an increase. And last year and this year, they are. So four percent. So last year, their levy was three hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars. And a four percent increase is fourteen thousand five hundred and sixty dollars, which would be a total of three hundred and seventy-eight thousand five hundred and sixty dollars. Basically, the impact, so if you want to go all the way to the top at eight hundred thousand dollars, here, the tax impact is less than six dollars. So very smaller scale than the district budget, to put into perspective. And at the bottom, two hundred thousand dollars is less than a dollar fifty cents. So this is the proposition that you will see, the community will see on the ballot coming May sixteenth. It basically just says the increase of fourteen thousand five hundred and sixty dollars with their total levy. Board election information, just wanted to talk about this. It's a little wonky this year, just kind of like it was last year. So as we know, Mr. Lehman has stepped in until May sixteenth for the vacant board seat. And then we have another, you can see, Mr. Evans is coming to a close on June thirtieth. So how this will work. And then there's one term that will start May sixteen and then June thirtieth. So just scenarios so everybody understands. If there are three people, three or more additions in that in the ring, the two most votes will obviously get along with the three-year terms. The third most will get that month and a half, basically, stint to fill that seat. If there are only two people running, obviously, they will get it no matter how many votes they get. And then the board can either go vacant until July first or appoint somebody like we did Mr. Anderson for the rest of. Wonky, but it's.
Someone will be on the board for one meeting?
Yes. Someone can be on the board.
Can be.
If there's three or more, they're asked to be. Because technically, that seat's not his, and technically, that was filled by that person. So wonky, just kind of like what was last year. I think we had four to three or four different seats and different terms in different points. So believe me, I ran this by legal on my own.
Rehearsed, but again, it's.
So, exactly. So wonky, but that is actually how it will work. So three or more, and then we'll have a decision.
Decision not made by us, dictated by the state, not made by this board, not made by this district.
Made by the state and then by the community who operates the decision, so. Just information, so documents will be available tomorrow. And tomorrow's because depending on the notice that you'll approve tonight. Petition information will be due the seventeenth, thirty days prior to the vote. Their expense forms are due April seventeenth, May eleventh, and June fifth. And then once we have, after April eighteen, after April seventeenth, we'll know all the acts in the ring. Then the order of those named on the ballot will be drawn randomly on April nineteenth at eight AM. And then candidates at the May second board meeting will do their five to seven-minute introduction. And then we'll have the vote on the sixteenth. So we saw this last time, they're just a hammer at home. You'll obviously see two bigger graphs, two bigger lines here on a bar graph. And those are salaries, and that drives our budget, making a lot of. So if you see over here, it's a little small, that's sixteen million. Over the past thirteen, eighteen million dollars out of a thirty-seven, thirty-eight million dollar budget. So, and that's not even including benefits, which is around six million. So your top one, almost twenty-four, twenty-five million dollars, and just that. So that's what charged the budget. And these other categories are debt service for capital project improvements. BOSI's expenses, as you see here, we've gone up in BOSI's. Materials and supplies, contractual, and just other, just very little on compared to the others. So like I said, salaries drive the budget. So the union agreements, as we see this bar going up, the expenses are just going to be increasing year over year. So we know everything for the teachers for next year, four percent. CSEA at three percent. And as I mentioned last time, still in negotiations with the administration unit. So not really known that before people are looking. But again, just drives the budget. And as we see these bar graphs go up, that's just going to be an increased expense year over year. Foundation aid, one of our biggest state aid components. It looks like we're getting a heavy lift of aid, but year over year, it's been the minimum amount to be given to school districts across New York State. So obviously, other schools have gotten more, but City Analyst has been handgun at the least amount compared to everybody else. There are other new services. We did get the minimum, but we have continued to get the minimum year over year. So this year compared to last, or this year compared to the projected year is about a hundred and thirty thousand dollar increase, which I'll show in the later slides. Tax cap trend, a little bit of fluctuation here. But as we go into next year, our tax levy increase is a maximum of two point two six percent.
Connor, will all of this be posted on the website?
This one will not, because it has not solid figures and firm information only. And I want them to take these numbers and allocate that more.
We need to ensure our state budget can be adapted forward with that part.
So that will be in three years.
But a version of this, when you get to a more final version, will be posted on the website?
April eighteenth, I'll post the final budget. So I must have taken, might have taken the slide out, and it might be later. But the average tax cap over the past six years has been two point ninety-nine percent. And the average approval amount has been about two point four two percent. So even if we were to go to the max, we are under the average increase over the past six years. Just our tax rate comparison. We are one of the lowest, second to Syracuse City School District. And Noddy Valley County has the lowest true tax rate in the county. Basically, that the property value just drives the tax rate down. We've talked about that multiple times. So like you said, this is our budget. Contractual increases, what's driving our budget? That's going to be the biggest factor, absolutely a lot of time. Inflation, fuel prices have leveled out, but even on competitive bidding, we've seen twenty to thirty percent increases, sometimes even fifty when it hit that peak, even on our competitive bids. So that's a true expense that we've been seeing year over year. We need to build that in, just like consumables, contractual work, everybody's getting paid more. Everybody's labor is more, materials and supplies more, everything is more. So we're not seeing a decrease in anything. So professional development opportunities, need to invest around people for sure. Two or three years ago, when COVID hit, everything went the wrong, and basically, everything went through. Over the past few years, we haven't built up that part of the budget. But now everything's open, everything's in person, and people are traveling. And there's a lot of great professional development opportunities out there. And our teachers are taking advantage of it, as well as our administrators. So we need to start building up that part of the budget as well. Social, emotional, mental health initiatives. So Krista Moth is doing a great job as a coordinator for student support services and then the engagement with Access Helio Health, Promisso, the BIMAS. Eric can elaborate more if there's any questions on that, but.
The only question on that I have is, you're not saying we're paying for those three services, Access, Helio Health, and Promisso, correct? Because those are county funded.
So they're partially funded? Like Access, no, that's county funded. But like Helio, Promisso, there's a district share between Noddy Valley County and all the local districts that subscribe to this.
And the BIMAS is around through BOSI, so there is an expense there, but we're moving it back.
So Helio Health isn't a private company?
Helio Health is paid through individual insurance, yes.
And then just to add, so we've talked about, just like the long conversation we had with John, just acute needs for special students with disabilities. There is an increase there, but we are giving those services, but there are some increases there. So we need to be cognizant of that. Increase in EML students. So over the past year, we talked about this. It's percentage-wise, we're probably up four or five hundred percent over the past three, four years. And just a few months ago, we hired an additional staff member that was not budgeted for. So we need to build that in going forward as those numbers keep increasing.
What are your real numbers?
What's that?
What's your option? Amazing.
I don't know.
Oh, twenty-five plus twenty-five from two thousand twenty?
Students.
Yeah, okay, it has been starting to come out. Yeah. Two thousand twenty, eight, five, and there were five hundred percent.
And as you saw, when the BOSI's run, and the state we have run, we had a ton of BOSI's aid increases coming here because we pushed so much there. We've continued to do that and will continue to do that. There's a lot of increase in CTE, Compass, and ELM buses. The rate services, but also kind of the price as well. So we do get kickback, but there is a price associated with that. Technology needs on our five-year replacement plan for our technology equipment. High school is up in twenty-three, twenty-four, and obviously, that's the biggest one of the five years. So there is an increase there. And then when we did, when we went one-to-one with Chromebooks, our plan was a five-year as well. And if you ever have, and you know they don't use through the last five years, so. So that we continuously purchased those throughout the year and had some on stock. So a cost plus what with that. Budget savings year over year, this, I mean, short list, because there's not much savings. I mean, everything's costing more. We had to have salary breakage due to retirements. With a low replacement salary, we've eliminated and consolidated positions. So there is no backfill on some of these positions. That's going to be our biggest thing where we see savings. And with our construction projects, we have higher efficiency utility equipment. With new boilers, AHUs, obviously, the utilities, air and air units. So obviously, utility costs have gone up. We would better, more efficient put this button there. We're going to kind of taper it off such as spike in those areas, which has been very good. So now to get to the nitty-gritty, and sorry, it's small, but there's a lot of areas for the program part of the budget. Just, I'll draw some attention to a couple areas, and then if you want to ask questions, feel free. Just year over year, we're looking at a four point six two increase in our program side of the budget, which is about one point one million dollars. Some of the biggest areas are students with disabilities, regular school, and computer instruction. The reason for the big computer instruction stuff is we have pushed so much stuff to BOSI's that technological BOSI's part of planning the budget. Instead of buying software directly through a regular school budget up here, we have shifted it down to computer system instruction. So that's why it's such an increase there. And again, the two things I mentioned, because of Chromebooks and the high school being the most expensive on that five-year plan. The reason for kind of a little increase, if you look at it over, if you think regular school, you're looking at salaries, you think it's the biggest, you'll see the biggest increase. We had a lot of retirements, some no backfills. So we've decided to go on salary breakage. And again, we've also moved some of that expense out here to the technology line of the budget. Transportation.
Connor, just above transportation, what's the sixty thousand, fifty-seven thousand dollar increase in athletics?
So part of that is, part of the fund announcement plan to, it's about fifteen thousand dollars. We give all those soccer balls to the new ones that we've attracted.
The same goals.
Same goals. But there are, again, a lot of trips associated with playoff runs, with success in athletics. And it has continued to go up. There's a lot of section three requirements for pay for coaches and refs.
Extra, right?
Yeah. Services.
Yeah.
Little hidden colleagues associated with that. Transportation, we, the toughest thing with having a contract in transportation is they go off the CPI in May, which is, they tried to hammer someone with seven, eight percent last year. We got them at four, which was great. Right now, it's going down a little bit, but not towards four anymore. So the full six, six and a half percent is built in there on the contractual side. And then there's also more runs, more, as John noted, if there's some kid that needs a ride, the transportation's great, we go get it. It's not free, obviously. We have to pay the driver, we have to pay the cost, the fuel. And there's extra around it. People are doing more field trips, more fun days, you know? So, and that comes with, comes with the costs. And then employee benefits, just an increase of about just under three percent. Any questions on the programs I have?
I know you had a meeting with the community center last week. Is there any talk, any increase in fees we pay them?
He was. Say that again, sorry.
I know you had a meeting with the community center last week. Is there about any talk for any education of what we pay for?
So I was double booked that day, and I did not actually intend that, because I was with you, if you recall. But they were talking about, pretty much static. I think they wanted to continue to do business with the school district in a uninterrupted fashion.
Been a pretty seamless transition over there, just.
I think that's, he said it was great.
Sorry. Your mailer that we got, they have a big stack of those over there now.
Yeah.
So, quick question.
Yes.
Just relates to all the colleagues, but let's look at transportation. So one point four is what you're budgeting.
Yep.
Where do you think your actual is going to be?
More than one point four.
More than one point four?
Yeah. For this term year?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so you're.
So our contractual amount, just for daily runs, is almost one point one million.
Right.
And then additional services for maintaining our vehicles, the extra runs, the field trips, it's going to be at least that.
Okay, so the increase over budget is really a small amount. You're going to be capitalizing on a small amount you're projecting for a cost in the next school term. Is that, is that, is what you're saying there?
Correct. Again, we do have contingencies if Drax wants to go on. Field trip, we're not saying no, so we can move to a different budget. But I think that's, I think it's a safe number.
Okay, any categories under budget after all?
Um.
Just big, big categories over here, but the.
Uh, it's the biggest ones. Um, under budget, it's always programs for students with disabilities. We always have cushion in there in case students come in.
So right now your actual is running lower than your budget.
Correct.
Okay, so then that discussion goes the opposite way for that with respect to the increase, right?
Um, correct.
Okay.
So, so people vote on a number, correct? In the school, like, so if we were over on special ed by two minutes, we had a student move in and where you can drop them anywhere, correct? You're not bound to.
There, there are some stipulations, like equipment lines, you can't dump stuff into equipment lines because that's, um, not contingent. Um, so there are some of those contingent expenses that you cannot take from. Um, but yes, there are, at the beginning of the, beginning of the year, it's a budget.
Right.
So you can't.
Special education, um, you know.
I don't know how you budget.
It's always, you, you always over anticipate that.
Right.
Because maybe you could have students with severe disabilities, and I've seen six hundred thousand dollars send students.
Yeah.
And, and the way to combat that is.
Just one student going to BOCES for even of the A grade programs, you know?
For sure, the only way to combat that is you need to get, increase the expense, which you have then appropriated fund balance in prior years that you've used.
Correct.
Or accumulated and then offset.
Correct.
Um, so you're not going over the budget, but if you don't, you still have that appropriated fund balance that you didn't use.
Right.
So.
So I guess my point, though, and I think we've said this in the past, when the public votes on, on number, that's the budget.
Yeah, so thirty million, I can't go up there, spend thirty million.
Right, but you can spend that thirty. I mean, I know we're not going to, that's why you have a budget and you have these lines, but you're not stuck to.
Uh, yeah.
Except for those couple of things you said.
I could spend twelve million in regular school and take it from, so it's a, that, that type of, type of.
Can you explain again, I'm sorry if you're upset, this thirty percent increase in the computer assisted instruction?
Correct, yeah, so there is an increase for the five-year, um, technology turnover.
That's the problem.
So part of that's Chromebooks, so there's more students in the high school. Um, so we do Waterman, State Street, District Office, Universal High School.
So are we hitting that thirty percent because we're replacing the devices earlier than we had anticipated or is that a consistent?
That's a consistent one, it's, it's pretty much a little off there and then it's usually a level of object after, after four years. Um, but again, we've also took some of that BOCES expenses that were categorized here and sent them down to computer system instruction. So we used to buy a lot of software direct and now BOCES has done a lot, really a good job of working with districts and talking to districts to get stand partners to, um, work with and control through BOCES. Not only is it certifiably, I'd like to be compliant, um, but we need to get impact.
In my regional means, this is the bulk of those meetings is finding, uh, share opportunities or finding services we're all subscribing to. And we can then, uh, have a closer, which is a cooperative service agreement with BOCES and then generate impact and all that. So kudos to Connor and his team. So here you'll see the BOCES line increased and that's, that's really what it is, everything from purchasing, you know, commodities, an ink and toner and things like that. To, um, some of the changes that people are, may not be aware of, old school summer school, for example. Um, it's largely computer assisted instruction that a lot of, they're not doing those general regional summer schools where there's lots of hundreds of kids. Um, that's sort of down the way of COVID. So a lot of that is things like edge immunity or castle learning or programs like that.
And, uh, kudos to Heather Buck too for smoothing these out as well. She did a very good job of making sure we're compliant, making sure the software is going in the right place, evaluating usage to see if we're paying for something and not using it. Um, so doing a really good job of, uh, of funding that.
Heather's great at, um, there's things people are emotionally attached to and it should find the actual data of usage.
And one, two people isn't enough for a couple of, a whole software improvement. You know, if you can't just do that, uh, and then you gotta cut back on stuff, so.
Connor, the other transfers, is that spending down, planned out from reserves?
Other transfers is, um, yeah, so a hundred thousand dollars for the capital outlet, um, amount that we transfer. We can do a hundred thousand dollar project each year. Um, employees. Sorry, that one's not it, sorry. The hundred and twenty thousand is for our transfer we make to school lunch each year, um, to offset the deficit that you should have run in prior to COVID. But they're doing very well now. Um, and the other one is to the federal fund to cover forty-four oh eight expenses that, um, some are learning for students with disabilities. Um, that the government doesn't fund, sort of fund eighty percent, we get, we have to cover the other twenty.
Two, two items that are being balled out in state government right now is, uh, universal funding for school lunches. That's one, so we're all using the bonus for that. Uh, and then the other one's actually a change from that hundred thousand dollar capital outlet project that schools will have to do over here to a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar capital outlet project. And that number had been adjusted since, since the maintenance. So we'll see, we'll see what, what ultimately shakes out of the state budget or else it's approved, but those are, those are in there.
Any more questions on program?
Yeah, you go with the.
Say that again?
Yeah, yeah, everyone's obviously supporting bringing it up. You're cutting back nearly, you said because you bumped up in twenty-three, twenty-two, twenty-three?
Uh, correct, yeah.
Based on blah, blah, blah.
Yeah. So capital, as, as Tom said, here's our transfer to capital. So as you remember, last year, this year we built in the thirty-five thousand dollars for security cameras. Um, it was built in there last year. This has been pulled up to operation of plant. Um, you'll see a budget transfer before the end of the year to move those funds over. Um, and doing more research, and since the first year we did this, this should have been budgeted in operation of plant rather than the transfer to capital. Because technically the general fund expense. Um, the biggest thing you'll see here, um, obviously operation of plant. Um, a lot of other, some of the fund balance management plan that's built into here as well. Other than access control stuff, um, there's a good amount of contractual increases in here as well. But the fund balance management plan to redo access controls, um, for the front doors of all the buildings, look at all of our exterior doors, um, and doing improvements and all the security stuff. Maintenance of the plant, um, we saw some savings there with salary breakage. Uh, just as overall scheme, a hundred and twenty thousand decrease in that service isn't all that much, uh, just almost two point two nine percent. Um, and the transfer to capital is just the, uh, has been transferred up to here in operation of plant. So overall capital is looking at a two point one five percent increase.
I'm sorry, you mentioned the reduction in the, as a plant is a, is because of the.
Um, some other utility expenses, um, some other, um, selling labor, um, and yet materials and supplies.
Okay, because I also expect, again, or where would your, your efficiency improvement in the capital equipment that was installed? Each one, where would you see that savings?
Uh.
Operational savings?
Operational maintenance, so it's the maintenance of it would be fixing it.
Supposed to be left.
Fixing it, so we're not fixing it as much or we're.
Correct, we're just starting on that life cycle, right? So is, where would that be captured, those savings, and before the four, five, five, zero? Correct.
Half of it, I would say.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, and, and the operation council, utility cost, but it runs more efficiently. That does not go in maintenance, that's an operational cost, where would you see that savings? What might enter?
Um.
You know, utilities are.
It's, it's part of this, you'll see it in contractual, obviously this is a full line item. If that, that line item breaks out into about twelve different codes of its salary.
So utility, that is a rule in which category?
Operation.
It is, it's a top category.
Correct.
So. So we have a twenty percent increase.
And the, and the savings weren't savings, they were less increases, so more efficient.
Yeah, which is, which is good.
Yes, exactly.
You have opportunity for us to avoid that, right? So having not done what you did, chances are you're going to be, that's what we said. So you avoided a large expense.
Yes. So two point two five percent for about a hundred eighty-seven thousand dollars for our capital part of the budget. Administrative part of the budget, um, we have an increase of point three seven percent for only fifteen thousand dollars. Supervision here, we've seen salary breakage is the biggest savings there. Um, but hold very small numbers here, so if anybody had a question on a specific item, I mean, if there is a. So, um, broad scheme of things, um, by the numbers program, we're looking at a four point six two percent increase. Capital out of two point one five percent increase, just over three point five percent. Um, just year over year, um, as, as a percent of the budget, um, we have, um, program last, this current year is sixty-five point five nine percent. Projected at sixty-six point six two, sixty-six point two six percent, so an increase there. Um, a decrease in capital of about, uh, point three, um, and a decrease in administrative of about point, just over point three. So obviously, program is where we want our money and that is where the increase is. Uh, we've talked about the revenues, property taxes and state aid or the bulk of it. Um, and we have other miscellaneous revenues that we all serve, except some of that with reserves and fund balance. So we can talk about appropriately committed to cover some of those contingency expenses. Uh, don't want to get into this, but we've seen it before, we've talked about the growth factors. Here's the long tax cap calculation and it's very simplified. Um, an increase, if we go to the tax cap, will be six hundred sixteen thousand, three hundred and fifty-four dollars. Here's the slide I was talking about earlier, I wasn't ready. Um, so maximum tax cap year over year for the past six years, two point nine nine. Um, approved BOE, um, tax cap average is two point four two. And our max this year is below, obviously, both of those. So if we were to go to the max, it would be below our average, uh, tax cap over the past six years.
That's, I'm taking you to imagine how that changes, right?
Eighteen, nine, yeah, this big one.
That's a.
Yeah.
Yeah, this one you need for your decoder.
Yes. I think it's still printed, but because it's A, so it's a paper with the, the whole of it.
I won't spend too much time here, like I talked about, our foundation aid, um, the lowest amount anybody got was two point nine nine percent, which we got. Um, about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Um, we talked about our BOCES expense increasing significantly, uh, almost three hundred thousand dollars just from that kickback because we push so much stuff there.
That's all realized as revenue at our A grade following school year.
Following school year.
So even though we got more foundation aid than we're used to, we still got the lowest amount?
Absolutely, yeah. Far less than inflation. Well, it's a far less.
Oh, yeah, inflation.
Absolutely. Especially if we're talking about the full budget, then it's far, far less.
It's all, it's all well determined, so this is a phenomenon that will change for us.
Yeah, and this is the, uh, last year fully funding the foundation aid formula. So maybe next year we could see more and be more distributed evenly. Um, but the state was putting more of their funds towards those districts that weren't funded, uh, fully. Um, and then as Eric said, um, if we look at our UPK amount, a hundred and eighteen thousand eight hundred. Although we got three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, no, we didn't, we get five hundred, five thousand four hundred dollars per state, which is about seventy-five thousand, six hundred dollars, so. We talked about the different revenues, um, we talked about the interest was the biggest difference for this year. For over four hundred thousand dollar interest we've earned this year, which is amazing. Um, so definitely some revenue we didn't expect there, but, um, can continue that, can, can, can continue to expect that, but it's definitely one, um, one nice to have this year. We've talked about our retirements, so currently we have assistant high school principal, reading teacher at the elementary level, chemistry orchestra, audio visual aid, type of one, ground school leader, groundskeeper, and a teacher aid as of right now. Um, Mr. Santoro has done a great job recruiting and putting that replacement plan together, evaluating needs throughout the district, talking to principals, seeing if we need to backfill, seeing if we can consolidate. Uh, so just doing a really good job on, um, laying that foundation and actually working the hard data. So the scenarios, bottom would be one point seven two percent, um, and that covers our contractual expenses. That includes the salary breakages and the contractual increases. Somewhere in the middle, one point nine nine percent, um, so, I'm sorry, go back. So one point seven two would get us four hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars of A, or of revenue on the current year. One point nine nine will give us five hundred and forty-two thousand, which is an increase over one, seventy-three thousand dollars over the seven, one point seven two percent. And if we went to two point two six, uh, it's just over six hundred and sixteen thousand, which is an additional a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars above the one point seventeen percent. What that looks like from the, um, taxpayer standpoint, uh, so this is based off just a hundred thousand dollars assessed value. Um, so basically at one point seven two, if you had a hundred thousand dollar house, these are the different townships. Um, you sure you would see anywhere from a nineteen dollar, um, increase to a twenty-eight dollar increase per a hundred thousand dollars assessed. Um, and then if you wanted to take it, um, or actually calculate it, so every thousand dollars is twenty-four cents. Oh, nineteen to twenty-eight cents. One point nine nine would be a range from twenty-two dollars to thirty-three dollars. Two point two six would be a range from twenty-five dollars to thirty-seven dollars. During the conversation that wants to happen about tax cap or what we have.
I, I would, uh, my only comment would be when we get ready to have a version to post on the website for the public. Personally, I find this very confusing, so either pick the thousand dollar or the hundred thousand dollar chart, but not both, because that's really confusing. And since no one has a thousand dollar home, let's.
Or a hundred thousand.
Or a hundred, right. I'm just saying for people, if they just go on here quickly, it might be that easier for people to understand if we just stick with the, for each hundred thousand dollars you're going up this versus the left hand side, because it's a left.
Presentation, I'll do a hundred thousand dollars, then two hundred fifty, three hundred fifty-four.
Yeah.
Perfect, yeah, I think it's, it's a little more digestible for.
This is the way we have to report it, um, over here, and then this is kind of making it just okay, a hundred, eight hundred, times that by eight, kind of thing. Any other conversations?
You just had the conversation ended up.
Yeah, let's, let's.
Yeah, yep, um, skin analysis at the top and it goes down. Um, so we've seen this one, we've talked about it, new initiatives and assumptions. Um, we talked about UPK, social, emotional, mental health, um, additional E and L teacher. Fully funded coordinator, student services and family engagement, we partially funded that last year. Now that four hundred and sixty-nine thousand is inclusive of that.
I'm sorry, Connor, say that again, if this, this list, all of these initiatives would be included in the, what tax rate? The two point two or the?
Uh, this one was included in one point seven two.
But this, if we want to do this whole menu without going line by line, that whole menu, we get that whole menu at two point two six?
Two point two six, correct.
Okay.
So our, our initiative is at the end of the day, if a student has a need, we will, we will find some contingencies and shift some things around. But if it's going to be, um, continued and, uh, offered, we want to make sure that it's built in the budget and that.
So if Ford agrees to put the, the full tax cap two point two six out on the budget ballot, budget ballot, we will get, we will fully take over funding those student services positions so that we now have that kind of built in. we will get, we will fully take over funding those student services positions so that we now have that kind of built in for years to come. Plus the UPK, plus the technology, plus every single thing on this list, if we go to the cap. And if we go less than the cap, we start crossing things off this list.
There will be some opportunities, whether it's professional development, whether it's pre-buying for stuff to make sure it's here for the beginning of the year, whether it be.
There will be some decisions to be made, I would not call them opportunities, I would call them decisions to be made, right?
And again, that's a larger budget, so that would not be up to the board, correct? You guys will be deciding as an administrative team and as a system what we're gonna.
Our decision would be that we are forcing them to make those decisions, okay?
So in April, you have to adopt the tax rate that you.
So based on these conversations, you're looking for us tonight to at least say, we are comfortable leaning in a certain direction or we can certainly cross something off the list?
Hopefully, do you think?
You'd like us to cross two?
You'll have to.
But as a, okay, as a, as a starting point, is there a tax? Can you show us the one where it's just the three options again? This one, thank you.
So I would say eliminate the 1.72 in my opinion.
I agree, very. Dan, Tim? So, so we're all in agreement to get rid of the bottom?
Yep.
Okay, that's one down. Tom, are you comfortable with that?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody want to jump in on the 1.99?
I think the one point with our fund balance, that was at 13% or whatever that we have to spend down. You know, to go to 2.26, where we have a fund balance of 13 point whatever we have to spend down. That's tough to tell our taxpayers that we're gonna charge you the extra $616,000, $147,000, even though we already have any fund balance that we have to spend down anyway. I think that's difficult to sell to taxpayers, so I'd support 1.99%.
We have, we have a fund balance of 1. how many million? What's our, what's our fund, 13%? What's that, no, we're not absolutely, so we could come in.
So total unappropriated, so we're allowed 4%. So by law, we are allowed 4% currently, we're at 13.8%.
In dollars?
4%, no, I'll give it to dollar again. Good, so 4% of it is about 1.4 million. So if you times that by four, that's what we're allowing. So 13.8% is about 5.2, 5.3 million. So we are currently 2, 3.8 million dollars below.
And we can take that 3.8, we can take all of that tomorrow out of our savings account and put it in our school budget and spend it this year if we choose.
Not this year, since we didn't spend more, but next year.
Or for the next, for this budget that we're voting on. We can take 3.8 out, take it out of the savings account, put it in our budget, spend it, paint street, make it pretty.
And if we don't.
And then still have a couple million bucks sitting in our savings account. It can be fund balance.
By law, it's supposed to be at 4% right now.
So, but it's a problem, it's a statewide.
And it's not a problem, it's a great problem. I would love that it's permanently.
But our, our taxes, as Connor said, our basis of our budget is on property taxes. So if I keep charging our constituents money that we are having in the savings, God forbid we have another COVID outbreak in the near future, but you know, if I charge them more, we have money to save in the savings account right now.
So that one before, so the difference between 1.9 and 1.99 to 2.6 is a difference of what?
123.
Yeah, 73 between those two, extra 70 grand. Can we take it out of the money you're talking about to be able to fund 2.26? Can we take that money that Dan's talking about? So, so we complete, still complete that list?
Yeah.
Global legislators, is that accurate? And do we have restrictions in terms of how we can make use of the difference?
No.
So pardon my math, if, if the difference between the two tax rates is $150,000 and we have 4 million bucks to spend, you're the finance guy, not me, but that's like 40 years of money, something, it's a lot of years, right? I don't think borrowing $150,000 from our own savings account is all that much. I'd say let's go borrow a million bucks from our savings account. I'm with Dan, let's go at the middle and take the extra money. I, I'm saying fully fund the budget to the desired 2.62 amount.
Just for clarity, that four, that, that, if you go back to the three hundred, that 147,000 that you see at 2.26 is over the 1.72 right now, so it's half of that, isn't it?
But obviously, let's, let's just take a little 50, we get so much money in the bank account.
77,000.
How much more money are we gonna continue to save and save and save and save and save? And I get the whole argument, you can't, you can't leave money on the table because next year the budget's just as big. We are literally sitting on money that we are required to burn. What are we waiting for? Like, I will give you the match, let's go. Go with the middle number and take up, fund everything on your list and put a cherry on top, take it out of the darn bank account. What are we gonna, am I missing something?
I'm gonna double click for one second, you said the general fund would be spent on anything, because I did not think.
Unrestricted fund.
So, teacher sale, I mean, anything.
Because at one point in time, sorry to interrupt, at one point in time, the requirement was that we cannot spend it on recurring expenses.
Right, it would be one time.
But that, we can't, it's not that we can't spend that reoccurring. The idea is to not spend it on reoccurring, because when we're reoccurring, you're gonna have to build it.
Because they're not going to survive.
Because you're going to have to make a decision to drop something because we can't, we can't support it.
Which, which makes sense when you don't really have a savings account, but when you have $5 million that you are required to spend, and we're talking $150,000.
No, we're talking half, we're talking seven.
Okay, I'm going with the most anyways. Okay, so it's 75. I cannot understand why we are not spending down our own money. How much more are we gonna continue to save and squirrel away? This is like, your grandmother never took a vacation and she has like a bazillion dollars and she should have afforded.
So Connor's got a great example, the, the 4% fund balance thing, while that's the common dollar's number, is long overdue to be changed. So your, your August example, can you do that again?
So just our summer, so under, 1.4 million dollars is under 4%. We do not receive any tax money in the summer, we don't receive any state aid in the summer. If we have two payrolls each month, it's $300,000 last year, so we'll see what happens.
So as you're up to $500,000, we still have $4.5 million to spend out, correct?
Say that again?
If we take even $500,000 to salaries for the summer.
We got health insurance payments.
Okay, so a million dollars. We still have $4 million of the savings.
We're, we're just, we're just illustrating the point that that 4% fund balance is.
13.8% compared to the law seems great, like exponentially against the law. But that number is long overdue and has been pushed to be changed.
Well, until they change it, it's still.
But even if the board has a whole set.
The only other thing to think about, though.
Right, if the board has a whole set, let's agree to disregard the law, even though it's, we feel more comfortable at a 7 or 8% savings account. That's fine, we still have 5% to spend and we're asking to spend $75,000 of it. This is, at some point, this is absolutely absurd that we will not spend our own money. And we want to just keep taking from everybody else.
What makes you nervous, I can tell you're like.
Right, that's right, that's a question.
What, why?
It's got a huge new fact of contract. That's gonna add over the.
What'd you say?
New fact of contract. Okay, so just bring this down to 4 million, but it's every year, so just things to consider.
I know, this is public talk.
Yeah. Bring it up. I feel, so my.
That's reoccurring expenses, so to stay, add million dollars of reoccurring expenses to the budget, we don't have, where are we getting that money this year? Of reoccurring expenses.
Can you just elaborate on like three to five things coming down the pipe that make you nervous as you make this decision? Like what's, what's, click them back there.
Contract negotiations.
Right.
Increase inflation. Equipment needs, storage needs that we have around the district.
And then sort of like log hours? What, what are we talking, oilers?
You're talking about, I got this one, you're right. We're talking about the 23, 24 budget, right? Are you talking about the 24, 25 budget? Because right now we're funding it fully from 23, 24, right? All right, so you're talking, you're ahead.
So these numbers are compounding, no matter what. Well, everything that is left on the table compounds. So if we go to 1.72, the 0.5% that we left on the table is compounded year over year, over year. So if our budgets, our increase is 3% next year, it's different than if we were at 1.72, 1.7, 2.6, 2.6. No, you won't.
How, how if you did this, you have contingencies, contingency budget, like move tomorrow, right? That, you have an actual number for that. If you look at your actual spend for 22, 23, if you look at actual, 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 right? And then you look at what the difference was between what we budgeted. Then, then you decide I'm gonna do 10% on that as contingency. If you just take the contingency part of it and let that be funded from the 13%. Then that would, that would be productive direct use of, of those funds right there. And you would still be allowed, and you'd still be allowed to, to use your percentage at a different number.
Yeah, so in the past about six years, we've spent about 96 to 98% of our budget.
Right.
So contingency amount is only just over a million dollars?
Okay, so fund, take a million out, start feeling aware of it, I mean, that's 13 million, sorry to find you.
So the fund balance obviously has to be addressed. Couple of things that happened and I just, that 4% number scares me. It, it scares me because you're flying too close to the sun on that. You end up paying your bills with your credit card and I will tell you more equitably, that if we were at 4% when COVID hit, we would not have had kids in school, there would have been no way to afford it.
If we got to that 4%.
We're not suggesting that. The conversation, there's no resuming it, so, so we get that, so double it, call it 8%.
Right.
Now let's start talking about the difference in terms of how you offset your contingencies with that difference. And you're still gonna have change, right? We, 1.3 million is the 4%, 5.2 million is the 13%, is that what you said?
Yeah.
Devote, right, just multiply it out.
Yeah.
You're making progress on that thought reduction.
So you have, call it 8%, you have a buffer for your concerns as to what's coming down the pipe. I mean, we get the compounding thing, I think we leave it on the table, that means next year when you offer it, blah, blah, blah. But it, it's how, are we gonna do that indefinitely? It's not like that I can't do, it's gonna take a while, but we're gonna definitely just leave money, you know, leave this 13, this five within the N B M's, just hanging away for a R E D D?
No, and that's why we're developing a plan to.
Well, right, but what we're suggesting is that consider a lower number for your R E D D fund. Something above your 4% or 8%. And then what could be the difference? Because you've gotta spend it down. We're gonna change the laws and presumably bring the 4% up to something else. But, you know, how, how could we apply it to minimizing the, the taxpayer at this point in time?
I mean, and Connor, you brought up inflation, so every individual in this community is experiencing the same thing. Not everybody lives in a $5 million home. So those people that live in a $100,000, $200,000 home are still experiencing inflation as well. And they can't continue to support themselves and live in this community with the continued tax rates that is considered. If we had the fund balance now, I mean, even if we go to 8%, 10%, we still have a surplus and we still have to spend it down. So why not provide that relief to our taxpayers this year in this situation, while we still have that advantage? That's why I support the 1.99 and then have 2.26.
Yeah, I was, I was already saying 2.26, but, because I thought we couldn't touch that fund balance on like the company budget.
Yeah, we should, we should research it, but.
So, so that we don't get in the, like, can we just take a rough? Is there anybody in this group that would like to go to the cap? Because if everybody says no, there's no point going around in circles and spending this fund up, because that's our question.
So let me qualify my response. My response is please make sure that we can spend that, the premise of this entire conversation is that we can spend on whatever we want, $5 million.
Unrestricted, right, correct.
And by the way, we're not voting tonight, we're just going to a consensus to vote, so maybe depending further information.
To insulate taxpayers from that burden, you can use that one else.
So is there anyone among us that would like to go to the cap of 2.26?
I just want to ask, when were the electric buses supposed to?
I'm throwing it, right, it's a hate now, I'm throwing it out there, because that's redoing our.
It is nonsensical to think that the state, where anybody in it can do that same.
No, but, New York State loves an unfunded mandate, so what?
2027, you have to start purchasing, I mean, new glass that you have to purchase, that's the electric. Your whole fleet has to be like 2035.
Even though right now they can't tolerate less than 40 degrees, but you got by the bar.
We can't power this, we can't give the electric where it looks for us, right?
Well, that's just right, the, the, the question is that maybe some of the, if you know, if we say it's 10%. I don't know, so that, that may be somewhere, that would happen, people would hog, but.
And then, you're pointing, there's things we had a budget for for.
Yeah.
And you're going to take well.
With the electric bus purchase for this year, who's Jordan Elbridge and they're not doing it.
I mean, it's revamping the whole entire everything. I'm just curious, are we talking about things that potentially are coming down the pipe? They may not be 2027, they may end up being 2037, but.
Yeah. Just, just to be fair, Connor, I mean, they have, they have the, they're using the same philosophy, where we wanna make sure and not leave any on the table, so. So this is nothing directed at you personally, it's just the conversation that we have in terms of why the board, given our current, given our current situation, which is very unique. And, and it's kind of a question that we're asking in terms of why, so it's not, let's not make it clear, it's not directed at you personally.
And, and I mean, the expectation is you have a job to do, which is to say to us, don't leave the money on the table. We, by design, have an opposing job to stay, figure it out, right? So that's.
The only time we haven't left any money on the table was COVID, so we haven't went to the cap. The only time was that COVID year.
You were just hoping this might be different.
I had something, it's good that Thomas is here.
I was just gonna say, hang on, that's your job.
Well, these are my things, because your memory is long enough, so.
Connor is exactly right to be taking the position he's taking. And board members are exactly right to say, we're sitting on a large amount of reserves right now, what do we do about that? The answer probably is somewhere in between the two. And within my experience on board, we had reserves going into our budgeting after the Great Recession, which occurred in 2008, 2009, had ramifications into the early 2010s. Because what happened was New York yanked away from schools at that point. And schools that did not have any reserves were in a serious problem at that. They had to lay off a number of teachers, instruction suffered in those schools. Forget about field trips, forget about the nice things that we were talking about earlier, allowing for them transportation aspects of the budget. It was quite Machiavellian and very, very uncomfortable for school districts to go through at the time. It was about as uncomfortable in many respects as COVID. So we ended up having reserves going into that. We had a plan and we spent those reserves down over a period of 40 years. And it didn't stop us from making all cuts. We still had to make cuts, but we did not have as, as bad experience here as others experienced. So having some amount of reserves would make sense. But at this point, if you look at farms in our community, for example, that are grappling with high energy costs, looking at potentially increased labor costs due to the minimum hourly, having overtime after 40 hours, which is gonna be paid in over a period of years. If you look at industry, if you look at some of our worst taxpayers, that difference between 1.99 and 2.26 does make a significant difference for those enterprises. And as such, if we do have the reserves, it's probably judicious for us to consider spending an additional amount, powder reserves. I'm not in favor of cutting back on the spending, because I believe those services that we showed are quite crucial to the operations of the school, particularly for United Cultural Crisis. I think we really need to redouble our efforts to be sure all our students are taken care of. So my position is 1.99 makes sense to me and spending at the level. And spending at the level of the two point two six also makes sense, but get that money from reserves. Make up the difference between one point nine nine and two point two six.
Yeah. I agree with, I would say have a lot of other tax cap rates or something like that. Carrie, how do you feel?
Um, no, I, I don't know. Um, I mean, I'm, I'm a type, I'll let you know, so I'm, I'm all for the, the middle. But I, I am feeling his energy.
And the comment, this smart man is cracking, it's awful, but. Here we go.
So.
But, and again, we're not voting tonight, so if we need further conversation, I said, but if we do need to.
So I'm totally comfortable either way.
Okay.
I would support, always support.
Dan, you're at one nine. Tim?
Um, like I said, I, from the get-go, I thought I was gonna be two, two six, but this listening, Tom's great explanation, I'm into one nine nine. But I wanna say to you, Dan here, thank you for a great presentation, so I understand this, I appreciate that.
Carrie?
Yes, in context of one that we are in fact able to spend it. I know you're reassuring a hundred times, just saying, qualifying it, that we are able to spend it in which we so desire, zero restrictions.
Correct. Unrestricted funds.
Right? In context of that, and, you know, like we talked about, I'm in favor of the one dot nine nine.
So Connor, I think for April then, cause I am also, I am, as Tom said, fully funding the budget.
Yeah.
But only going to the taxpayers for one nine nine. And I think that's the big, that's kind of the talking point. We wanna fully fund the budgeted.
Yeah.
But use some of our own money, cause I think that's important.
To minimize the burden.
Yeah, and I think that's important to reiterate to people that we are giving you the whole menu, but we're gonna, we're gonna forget some of that, because we can't.
Well, we're not out there in community now too, there's a lot of where there's been a town, there's, uh, you know, I mean, we are, I, I feel the pull from a lot of different places too.
That's only gonna reverse.
Yeah. So you still wanna, you've, you've still got the whole page. Don't be so sad, you look so sad.
I'm gonna give him a heart.
I know, Carrie, come on. I feel so bad for him. Sorry, Connor, we still like you.
Yeah, nothing to lose, that's why we qualify it.
This is what, this is the board, this is the board's decision, actually.
He's like, you're bold, isn't he?
It's my job to provide the facts, information, and drive the conversation.
Yeah, but according as I were qualifying, why I'm taking this particular direction and this particular time, given the circumstances of Germany, because let's say things kind of return to normal or looks differently, we may very likely go back to the, to the operating philosophy where we wanna max cap out, to make sure we, we do what we're gonna do.
So it's, I figured that.
Last of us.
Small side of it, yeah.
All right? Awesome. Great, well, thank you all.
Thanks.
My pleasure.
He's got beat up at the game, basketball game, he's still going on.
No.
Okay. Do you still have one?
I have a couple, nothing.
I'm gonna argue the reset. We're not taking those, Carrie, fuck them.
Uh, it's like five songs. Just a reminder, federal funding is driving up, we have just about four point two million dollars.
You're like fly.
Yeah.
Like, I think it solves you a little bit, okay?
He's already working, he's already working twenty-four, twenty-five.
So obviously we're working on the fund balance management plan.
They're helping you.
You are. We've, as we were directed, went to our admin team, went to teachers, came with these pots of, um, areas, um, of concern. When we talk about safety, security, equipment, furniture, obviously instruction, social emotional health. And there are some, some, some construction things. Obviously that can be approved, but there are some actual cost allowances. If we do not run them through a project, we can do improvements in some of our buildings. As Amanda has alluded to.
Painting space.
Yep. That's.
And a man is asking poor Johns up here begging, like, get the hallway back up.
And, and a few other things. Spent a lot of time in that building, very happy to see.
But we can use those unrestricted funds to do some of that work that doesn't hit against the max cost allowances, to get more aid, um, in the project.
I just still wanted to say, I'm hearing, but we still have to be cautious, because we could find enough things and there's still things to throw down significantly. But that's not what we were.
Should have seen the list before I put some off.
Yeah, just, we still gotta be, even when he's, now we gotta be.
Absolutely.
Well, and you're kind of, I'm timing. If minimizing tax implications for, for residents is, I mean, that's part of the fund balance better.
Um, and so we have already begun to get quotes and prioritize these items. So reconfigure doors, about fifty thousand, safety fencing around campus. There's a lot of fields around, but there's not much protective fencing where walls are flying. So there are some securities there, some security concerns there. Fencing for the softball field, um, just other items like that, fully fencing the baseball field. Just some items that the boards want to improve without any burden on our taxpayer. Those are the kind of things that we're talking about. So student teacher desk replacements for testing, we still have those ones from the fifties, sixties, the ones that have the arm or that have no lefty ones, no lefty arms. District equipment, whether it's, um, medical carts, um, we have golf carts around, but there's not one specific for the medical, athletic trainer, um, so she has to take that off and put it on her own cart every time. She had a, um, we all know what happened in Buffalo, that saved a life, obviously. So it didn't make a matter of seconds, so without having to do that, and then having your own dedicated car, we could do that. Playground upgrades with the U P K continuing, uh, obviously those kiddos are smaller. That playground might not be perfectly fit for them, upgrading and getting smaller type of thing for those kids.
One of the things that's emerging as a, as a need too, just to be cognizant of, is smaller vehicles to do like quick runs around campus, quick runs around the community, is we don't, we don't have any other than a mail van. So if we're running kids to a golf practice, it's an assistance in fashion bus, so we're running with the enormous. We, we have a mail van that has no passenger seating in it, and it's, it's a rare thing, we don't have, uh, we don't have passenger cars.
And can we look more at like fourteen thousand of a van than a suburban? Cause a suburban fits seven people and for the same price.
There's, there's smaller buses, there's, there's like the church van type of things.
Yeah, like a church, church van, like versus a suburban that only fits seven people.
Right. There's just things.
Just some of the popular things that'll come up. So something sort of there is a vehicle that's large enough to carry a number of people, doesn't necessarily require a bus driver.
A lot of the districts are going to like the vans, not minivans, but vans, like airport shuttle type things.
Yeah.
There's the, uh, the Dodges that you see everywhere. We actually have, our mail van right now is a Ford Transit, that's a popular thing that a lot of districts are going to do, with the bench seating in it, that holds sixteen kids or eighteen kids versus, you know, a minivan that holds sixteen.
Like when we had kids going to track for states to take a bus, three kids took a bus.
A giant.
But if there was like a school van.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It was way more efficient.
Transition, yeah. Convenient, yeah.
A little more impactful.
Just for those sixteen or fifteen passenger vans, do your research on those before you're, okay, purchasing those. So now to see if there's one way, I think they are.
Do the, uh, do the first student bus drivers, can they, this might be a dumb question, but are they allowed to drive a different vehicle? Cause like, not, I mean, it's a major liability to just start buying other vehicles to drive things around.
Yeah, yeah.
Piece of it is like the bus drivers.
They're, they're overqualified to drive a vehicle that doesn't require.
So even though they're not, it's not like a first student owned vehicle?
They don't own any of their vehicles.
Okay.
You don't know.
We all know.
So yes, these are some, more of the expensive items that are gross to the top, rather than some of the things I nicked off and, and left off that we could fund through the actual budget.
One of them, Rob.
That's what I'm trying to. So just, so budget workshops, we have one more budget workshop on April twelve. I believe that's at five thirty here. The district office, we've had three so far, and still should attend, so. If you can't work the times, feel free to call us during the day.
Just give us a call or be cheerful if, um, people wanna talk for sure.
So this was supposed to be on Tuesday. The tax cap decision, I will move forward with one point nine nine. We will work with A B F on Monday on how much of that fund balance to build in. And again, we can build in the whole thing. If we don't spend it, it's still there, so, um, but if we don't build it in, we can't spend more than, than the budget allows. So we'll work on that on Monday. April eighteenth, adoption of the budget and final budget presentation. A second, introduction of the candidates, sixteenth is the vote. Proposition is the budget, the library, the buses, which will be approved tonight, which is sixteen. And the petitions are due April seventeenth, by five P M. in the district office. And then again, the sixteenth is the vote.
And this will be posted on our website, you know the dates.
It'll go out to parents where everything, uh, once the budget notice is approved. Cause there's something that they're like on the petitions that have to be approved first. Any other questions?
Next card.
Thank you.
If you're coming in.
Thank you.
Lady Travis.
Okay. Okay, I will second the rest, we're gonna approve A, B, and C together. A is personnel, retirements, resignation, leave, and termination. Be resolved, the Board of Education approves unpaid leave for Jennifer Miller. And I will keep going, be resolved, the Board of Education approves job rate appointment for Jesse Alguirri.
Alguirri.
Okay, job rate appointment for Peter DiStefano, teacher aide. Jen Clancy McBride, teacher aide. Mary Margaret Chris, teacher aide. David Hay, grounds supervisor, uh, what's this? Zachary Chawago, groundskeeper. And permanent appointment of Natalie Andreos, administrative assistant. Can I get, oh, hold on, I'm going. We're gonna want to see, which is temporary substitute volunteer appointments. Be resolved, appoints Catherine Corbett as substitute teacher. Matt Fobertie, substitute teacher. Rachel Ferguson, substitute teacher. George Coon, substitute teacher. Brad Parker, substitute teacher. Sarah Kowalski, substitute, substitute nurse. Judith Shear, long-term sub-teaching assistant. And board approves the spring twenty-three coaching recommendations. Also, the board appoints Ellen Donovan as volunteer help with English language learners at Waterman and State Street Schools. And I get a motion on those appointments. First Amanda.
Second.
Second by Tim. Any questions, comments, discussion on these?
So I recuse myself from this vote, because I'm a volunteer on the coaching list. I'm a volunteer, but I am on that list.
No problem. Any other questions or comments on this? Okay, all those in favor, uh, A, B, and C, group together, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And Tom Langdon was, he's done that one. Moving on to item D, which is a superintendent's employment contract. Be resolved, the Board of Education approves the addendum to extend the superintendent air fitness contract, um, for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Can I get a motion on this one? First by Carrie, I will second that. Comments or questions on this one? Okay, just like to add, I'll take that line from Tom Langdon's cast, from my predecessor mentor. It is customary for the board to typically do a one-year contract extension for a superintendent. Happens in most school districts, it's kind of a show of good faith on both parties' parts, that we would like to continue this relationship. Okay. If I could get a vote on that, all those in favor of approving the contract extension, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes. We are on to E, notice of annual school district meeting to the voters. Board of Education approves the notice of annual school district meeting to the voters for May sixteenth, twenty twenty-three, which is something that Connor just put up. Can I get a motion on this?
So.
Carrie first, Amanda second. Questions or comments on this?
Oh, is that document the correct document? There's a name, there's somebody that's unemployed on the end of that, that letter.
I will redact that part of it. And then one comment, just as in previous years, um, you're supposed to get twenty-five signatures. It's actually twenty-nine this year, which is a good problem, because it's either twenty-five or two percent. How many people voted last year, and we had over fourteen hundred vote last year. So it was twenty-eight point whatever, so it was around about twenty-nine percent. Twenty-five, so it's twenty-nine instead of twenty-five, which seems previous year.
Okay, we should have clarification.
So describe that word, just in case.
And you will fix that section?
Yes.
Perfect, thank you. All those in favor?
Just, yeah, I think you have a pretty compliment. See, that's some deeds that are. He, twenty twenty-two, he put eighteen, twenty twenty-two, five P M. Last paragraph. Middle of the last paragraph. Yeah, it just needs to be cleared up.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, all those in favor of, uh, the May sixteenth, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes as well. Next three are all solo, then we'll do a big group at the end. Proposition one, general fund budget. Be resolved, the Board of Education approves proposition one, general fund budget, to adopt the annual budget of the school district for the twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year. It operates the requisite portion thereof to be raised by taxation on the taxable property of the district. So.
Sir.
First Amanda, second Dan, all those in favor of approving that we have proposition one on the budget vote, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that one passes. Next one, proposition three, which is the library levy. Board of Education approves proposition three for the Skinnella's library levy to read. Shall the sum be raised by annual tax levy of tax upon the taxable real property within the Skinnella's school district for the purpose of funding the Skinnella's library association be increased by fourteen thousand five hundred and sixty dollars, four percent to the sum of three seventy-eight, five sixty annually?
Subwoofer.
First by Tom, second by Carrie. Questions or comments on that? Okay, all those in favor of putting Prop three on the budget, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes. Next one, approval of commissioning.
Ooh, yeah.
Question point and word, the bus profit session.
We vote on that last night. Good question. Item H, approval commissioning services for project twenty-three, twenty-four. Be resolved, the Board of Education approves the commissioning services for project twenty-three, twenty-four, awarded to M E Engineering as attached in our board packet. Can I get a motion on this?
So, second.
Okay, first Dan, second Tim. Comments, questions, discussion?
We just have one comment here, the qualification, it's the team just amazing on this. One comment aside, I'm be sure they check the rules. We see that challenge with our climate and the flat rules, where we have lots on the circuit. Yeah, that's one that they don't do, it's more of like the boy leaders, the A G units, so it's more of like the actual utility stuff.
Yeah.
But we allow, we.
It's not really part of the.
Correct.
Never mind.
Yes, but we won't, that's not radar from last time, believe me.
It's a challenge.
Yeah.
It's a challenge with these white moves.
Okay, all those in favor of approving, uh, that's a great question, please say. The service project, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that one passes too. We're gonna group the next few together. Item I is approval of the school calendar draft. It's the twenty-three, twenty-four school calendar draft. Item J is a health service agreement with West Jenny for a few students that attend West Jenny. Be resolved that we approve, um, the health services agreement with West Jenny School District for twenty-two, twenty-three. Is this supposed to be twenty-two, twenty-three, or twenty-three, twenty-four?
It's this.
Oh, it's this current year, okay. In the amount of one thousand one hundred and fifty-seven dollars and twenty cents.
Students that are going there now.
Okay, perfect. Item K is the Allen Family Foundation Hockey Scholarship Donation. The Board of Education here very approves the donation from the Allen Family Foundation of two thousand dollars for hockey scholarships. Item L is a softball spring break trip, which is a nice mix-up from a spring break baseball trip. Girls can go find some sun. Be resolved, the Board of Education approves the spring break overnight trip for the girls varsity softball team, which is very thick. And item M is a flurry of financial reports. Be resolved, the Board of Education approves the January twenty-two and February twenty-two financial items as attached. Can I get a motion on all of those? So first Tim, second Amanda. Comments, questions, discussion on any of these items? I'll just say thank you to the Allen Family. I'll just say thank you to the Ellen Family Foundation for that scholarship. I'm sure our students appreciate it and congratulations to recipients. Anything else? All those in favor? If there's no other questions or comments, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, those all pass. Oh, wait. Well, it's okay. I was going to say anything on those financial reports, it should be considered though. No, I don't think so. Just checking. Okay, next up, single item is the Z S E report. The Board of Education, be resolved, the Board of Education arranges for the placement of students with facilities as recommended by the CPSE C F E in Bible board community meetings. And we have all of those reports attached in our board packet. Can I get a motion on this item? So move. First Amanda, second by Tom. Comments, questions, discussion on these?
Just, you know, we have a lot of reports and from the principals and things I love to hear from Jen Whipple. Maybe a little bit more on Treven's that she's.
Already announced.
All right.
Can I get a vote on this? All those in favor of approving these reports, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes as well. We are on to process review. The next board meeting is April eighteenth. I'm sorry, board meeting Tuesday. The board meeting is the eighteenth, so we will do agenda setting the week prior. Anyone available? Uh, Tuesday or Thursday? And if everybody's unsure, we can connect. Yeah, it's, it's after spring break.
I can go with A D M on those days.
Okay. Anybody else? I will, I will be there. I just need one more. I can do a four on that over those days, but. Okay. I'll tell you what, we will send, I will send out a poll right, I will send it out at weekend after break, if you have the break. Just at least a weekend, seeing who's available. And we will, let's target Tuesday so we have enough time to be able to. In regard, this will get the agenda out of what we can advance anyway, like we did this time. Okay, next board meeting will be the eighteenth and then all the, we will adopt the budget at that meeting and all those other dates for board positions and petitions will all be posted online. If anybody has any questions, they want to line up to join this one.
Are you, are we looking at, we're looking at location of one of the board meetings, State Street or Mark Waterman, as we've discussed?
Um, I.
No, we talked about Waterman for the May, for the evening, I believe if I recall.
Yeah.
Waterman, but that was, you know, in the minutes.
The budget vote.
The budget vote, we can't be in here, so we'll.
Right. So we talked about going to Waterman, but we had said in the beginning of the year, we wanted to hit all of our buildings. So if we are going to go to State Street and the library some days, the April evening. Otherwise, we're, we're going that with your hand, but.
So we could do this June, July also. The idea is for the board to get there.
I would prefer, I would prefer to do, I would say let's go to State Street maybe.
Let's go to State Street for next week.
Especially because it's. Or before the laptop, State Street, let's go see how that is. Let's go see. Thank you, Connor, for seeing what you're doing.
I'm not sure if that's a quality reason after that. It's the angle you want.
No, let's, let's plan for a while at State Street. Also, we're painting close and we are going to give that now. Uh, we are now at the second opportunity for public comment. This is your time. Don't shy. I will not read that whole statement again, but if you would like to speak, all signals play. They sent out the card. All right, if we have no public comment, I would like to request a motion to adjourn.
So move.
All right, Amanda and Carrie, everyone in favor of adjournment at nine thirty-eight? Please say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Oh, yeah.
Thank you for coming.
Tom, thanks for jumping back in. Miss me.